And so the first thing that we're going to start with is the disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. There are 10 items on the list. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to deal with all of those items because of the way the agenda was set up. So this evening, the items that we will be dealing with are number five liability claims, number six labor negotiators or labor negotiation, number nine, public employee discipline, and number 10 student discipline. So those are the items. And do we have any public comment?
There are no hands raised for public comment.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
Can we hold on one second? I don't have. Can you say the items again, please?
Yes, sir.
You said five, nine, and 10?
Five, six. So five is liability claims. Six is basically negotiations. Nine is public employee discipline. And 10 is student discipline.
Okay, got it. So number four, which is around potential litigation. We would like to discuss that this evening in closed session with you and share what we feel is potential litigation if possible.
The agenda, and I sent you this information prior to the meeting.
Yes.
The agenda was not done correctly. It does not comply with the board bylaws, and it does not comply with the law. And if I need to send the same email that I sent to you with the footnotes for the board bylaws to the entire board, I will. I hope that we would not do this tonight. I have explained why. And I hope that we can move on.
Okay, well, we have. You did send me an email, absolutely. And we have, we checked in with counsel about number four. And counsel has shared that if the district believes naming the party that might be part of an anticipated litigation might make that litigation even more of a reality than the district has a right not to name that publicly. And that's what we were trying to do was just keep some confidentiality for the board members.
Okay, and that is not the only item in that board bylaw. There are other items in the board bylaw. So we don't keep going back and forth. I've announced which ones we're going to do tonight, and we're going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. So the other board members, they may not know how to return to closed session. I'm sorry. I just realized that. So in your email, you should have gotten two links. So there's a link for the open session, which we're in right now. And then there's a link for the closed session. So what you would do is click out of this one, and then you would click into the closed session link. I'm sorry for not explaining that.
Okay, I went over that one to one with with folks. So you'll see in your calendar, you have a Google Meet. So you click leave here. And then you do, you go into your Google Meet on the calendar. So you can close this, leave it, open Google Meet, and just drop into that. So you'll see that on your Gmail calendar. If you don't, I'll still see you here. I'll wait and I'll make sure you have the link if you're not. You're not gone.
And we can do that now?
Yeah, go ahead now. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, three. Do you have that?
I'm going back in my email. I've got so many emails. Now it's buried.
Get to your Gmail calendar.
Okay.
Mr. Duffy, do you want me to put the link in chat or no?
Yeah, you can put the link in.
Is everybody here?
No, I'm still working with trustee Christian to get him.
Trustee Christian, do you see the chat? There's a link in the chat on the Zoom. You click that, it should open.
Okay.
It's 6:30. So we are going to begin. The first item is B1 swearing in of board members. Mr. Duffy, the presentation?
Yes. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our board meeting. We're going to get to all of our normal formalities in a few minutes. Proud to say that all of our board members, all five of our board members were sworn in this Friday at Dejawn Middle School. We were asked to do the swearing in live and in person by our county officials. So we created a swearing in process at Dejawn outside, and we put it together so that the community and the audience could see the swearing in, both to see what we did and of course verify that our new elected officials have been in fact sworn in for their duties as trustees of the Board of Education. So I'm going to ask staff to share screen and share that video. It's about two and a half minutes long.
Jamila Smith-Poles.
I, Othree Christian.
I, Mr. Phillips.
I, Leslie Reckler.
I, Demetrius Alasfoi.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
All enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties the line about to enter.
To enter.
To enter.
To enter.
Good. I think you're done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations again to all of our trustees for new members to the board, but even a fifth new member as we transition to trustee areas. So that is new for all of us. So thank you to the board members for coming out and making that work. Thanks to the staff for putting that together, Mr. Jordan and the communications team. So it's official. We are sworn in and we are ready to go.
Thank you very much for that great presentation. There may be some folks out in the audience who want to say something. So is there any public comment?
We do have some public comments, some hands raised. So I see four now. Will be, are we doing three minutes?
We will do three minutes for four people.
It's up to seven now and climbing.
Okay, so just so we could start off on the good foot, we're going to follow the board policy. Public comment will be 20 minutes for the items that we bring up. And just so we can try to give people some time to be able to make their comments, we're going to go for a minute and 30 seconds for each person. And we're going to hold to that for each public comment item.
Okay, so let's see if we have our timer ready. The first comment is Veronica Diaz. Ms. Diaz, you can unmute to begin your comment.
Thank you so much. And I just want to make sure I heard correctly. That was a minute and 30 seconds per comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Hi, everyone. I'm Veronica Diaz. I'm one of the three Teamster Union representatives for your classified staff, and I want to start off by congratulating the incoming board members and the student representatives. As you're probably all too are well aware, your job will be harder this year than if you had gotten elected any other year. And we stand in solidarity with you to think through how to best continue serving your students while keeping worker safety in mind. I wanted to acknowledge the amount of work being done by the Food Services Department. Everybody from drivers to school lunch workers and food service workers to even yard supervisors are literally putting their health on the line to feed thousands of community members every single week. The amount of meals the district provides surpasses that of the food bank every week. And I cannot tell you how proud I am to serve the workers who serve the community in such a critically important way. But the district is pulling this off with bare bones staffing levels, and your workers are tired. They are shorthanded. Those of you who have been in conversations with our union spanning the last couple of years know that we have been talking about short staffing in this department in particular for a long time. And the responsibility that the district has undertaken with feeding the community during this pandemic has made it worse. Luckily, the department is acquiring the tools needed to make the workload reasonable, and we have really clear communication and working relationships with management. In the coming weeks, we want to continue engaging the district in conversations on how to ease the workload. And we really hope that part of the solution will involve bringing in more employees, whether they be new hires or subs who are likely going to need to be offered a stable schedule to incentivize their commitment to showing up every day. The need for food is obviously such in the community that investing and bringing in more people to help with food distribution will pay off.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much for your comments. Ms. Diaz, next.
So, Mr. Phillips, I just want to remind the public that they need both the first and last name to be called. Let's see someone with just a first name. The next speaker is Marissa Glidden.
And Mr. Aurelio.
Yes.
This is supposed to be one minute and 30 seconds.
Yes, we're, we're working on that. We don't have a preset 90-second timer. We're tracking one down.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Hi, trustees. My name is Marissa Glidden. I am president of United Teachers of Richmond. On behalf of the educators in West Contra Costa Unified School District, I wanted to congratulate you all on your new positions. We are so thrilled that you'll be serving on the board. We want to wish you luck, extend congratulations, and wish all of you very happy holidays and happy new year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanna Pace.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board. My name is Joanna Pace, and on behalf of Public or a local advocacy group, we want to welcome all of you to this board and to this new life of service on behalf of the students and families of our community. Welcome and and we're very glad to have you onboard. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sochi Rodriguez Vial, Vialpando.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the new board members. Appreciate that you're all here. My name is Sochi Rodriguez Vialpando, and I am the Dean of Operations at Summit Tam Middle School and High School. Throughout my experience in education, I've had the ability to work with different attendance systems, and I'd like to sit here and tell you that I know the solution to absenteeism. But the reality is that there isn't a simple solution. How to battle absenteeism depends on each student and needs to be molded to each one of them. And because I do know this, Summit the Month By East has given me the time and the opportunities to research what works best for our community. Whether it's working with our other sites and learning their methods inside and out, or creating different tiers and individually finding out what works best for each student and many more other methods beyond that, there is always that opportunity to grow. I know that my role as the DOO supports these systems in place to mainly help our students, families, and teachers in ways that I only dreamed of when I first started education. But it's a dream that continues to expand while becoming a reality here at Summit Tam. So thank you, Summit, and I really enjoy working here. So thank you.
I just want to remind the public that this item is not public comment at the moment. This is the swearing in of the board members item. If you wish to hold comments outside of that, please wait till a public comment. Jose Deleon, you're next.
Good afternoon, board members, new board members, and a couple of faces that we work together in different committees. My name is Sozada Leon. I'm the Chair of the Administrators Association here at West Contra Costa. We'd like to welcome you and thank you for taking on the responsibility to lead, help lead this district. And we're always here working in collaboration with our board members. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next speaker is James Tawalu. You may unmute.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening. The new WCCUSD board members, congratulations on winning the election. And best of luck for your mission to improve the education in West Contra Costa County. Since Mr. Davy also here, I want to also say thank you to Mr. Davy for your service. I'm aware that you will not seeking for a new extension. Although we hope you will reconsider, but I know your decision is final. So hopefully contract WCCUSD will find someone as good as you. If not, better than you. But I hope Superintendent will will do things that what you just did to the district, like opening the West County Mandarin School, which I believe that a lot of parents that would send the children to charter school think twice and send their children to West County Mandarin School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Aurelio said, that this item is regarding the swearing in. We do have another item regarding the superintendent later in the meeting where people are welcome to speak to that.
Thank you. And our next comment is from Don Gosney.
Thank you very much. I just want to congratulate and applaud whoever put together that fantastic video clip that we watched at the beginning of this. Over the decades, I've watched a lot of swearing ends live and in person, and this was so much cooler. It was just great. My recommendation is go to the your, the district's website. I'm sorry about the little kids, but erase those little kids on the banner pictures up on the top, at least for the next month, and show this video clip. Because this is news. This is something that we all need to applaud. So take advantage of it. I'd watch it a couple more times. Oh, by the way, congratulations to all the victors, too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Glazer. Mr. Glazer, you can unmute.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to the new board that's coming in. It is so awesome to see everybody so motivated to improve our schools like we've heard. And also a quick thank you to Mr. Duffy.
Our next speaker is Kim Chamberlain.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I am the president of SSA School Supervisors Association, IAPTE Local 21. I'd like to just congratulate all of you, and we in SSA look forward to working with all of you over the next few years on improving our district. I am very proud of how all of you have conducted yourselves throughout the entire campaign, and I hope that the children of our district will take on your gratitude and how you have conducted yourselves and continue that in their education. Congratulations.
Our next speaker is Siletta Hunter.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I just want to extend congratulations as the Chair of ASAT. I am so happy to have you as our new board. I'd like to see that my vote counted. Love to see you there representing, and I know that you're going to do a wonderful job, and we're going to have a great relationship and do wonderful things together. I wish you the best. And I know that you are here for a reason in this time. It was designated for you to sit on this board. And so I applaud you ahead of time for all the great work that you're going to do for our community.
Our next speaker is Alon Harrison.
Oh, congratulations. Y'all look so wonderful. I'm so happy to see all y'all. That is terrific, and it's just good. I know we're going to still do a lot of good work. I work with most of you guys already. And just look forward to rolling up our sleeves and getting back to work. I am so excited about this team. This is awesome, and it's a breath fresh air to see you guys, a time long awaited, and good to see you guys. Thank you. Good job.
Baysha Harris Gash is next.
Good evening. Congratulations to the new board. I'm just looking forward to what's coming next. I would just like to share that we, those of us who are in the trenches each and every day with our students, so be it its teachers, be it as paraprofessionals, be it as our custodians, our food service staff, those of us who touch kids every day, we are real people. We are more than our employee numbers. And so just in moving forward with each of you being in leadership in the direction of this district, just remember we are more than our employee numbers, and especially in this day of COVID. We come with a lot of stuff, too, but yet we come before our students each and every day and give them the best that we have to give. But when we need help from leadership, we need leadership to listen. Let's have a conversation and discussion. Don't send 50 million emails because it becomes very impersonal. So like how we want to nurture our relationships with our families, I'm looking forward to the leadership of this district nurturing relationships with those of us who were in the trenches. So I pray everybody has a wonderfully blessed holiday. When we come back, it's time to start rocking and rolling, looking at be it its reopening, how we're going to finish out distance learning. But we're all in this together. I love you all and look forward to seeing you in 2021.
Our last speaker on this item is Jennifer Peck.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm a parent in the district, and I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all of the board members for the commitment you have signed up for. My mom was on the school board when I was in school many, many years ago, and I know that it can be a difficult and sometimes really thankless job. So I really do appreciate the time you are putting in at this incredibly important time. And also just want to say lean on your parent community across the district. We have so much talent in every corner of this district. So please lean on us. Thank you.
And that concludes comments for this item.
Thank you very much for all of those wonderful comments. And now I would like to give the board members an opportunity to say something to their constituents. And I, she's smiling. I'm starting with Ms. Reckler because she knows that. That's why she's smiling. Mrs. Reckler, her up.
So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, everybody who supported me. There were many, many angels out there that dragged me over the finish line in support, in contributions, and passing out signs, and all the wonderful things that you did. I want to give a special thanks, though, to Principal Matt Burnham, who is really the reason why I'm sitting here, because my journey started in the administration portable at Portal of Middle School, where after a, can't remember, information night or whatever, he was like, hey, you know, you should really run for the board. And I was like, what board are you even talking about? Running for exercise? I mean, I couldn't even put together what he was saying. And he said, no, you should really consider it. And the takeaway for me and the takeaway for students is just when people tell you those things, believe them, believe them. They're telling you that for a reason. And it took me, you know, I took it to heart. For a long time, I blew it off, and I was like, hmm, maybe I can do that, you know? And so, you know, when people tell you those things, take a listen. It's important, but thank you, and I will do my best for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Reckler. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. I just want to start by thanking staff for that amazing video. I hope I don't end up becoming the emotional board member, but I was close to crying just seeing everybody's families and journeys. Because I know that this is a hard journey, but we're all here for good, for good reasons. And I just want to thank our community. We wouldn't be here without you. And, you know, we're going to pay as much attention as we can, be as present as we can, especially during this times. And now there's a lot of decisions coming up that the board is going to be making in the next year that are going to affect a lot of folks. So, you know, we're going to be as inclusive and open as we can in this new team. I am truly excited to serve with everybody here and truly move this district forward in a positive, equity-minded and inclusive way. And a big shout out to my wife and my family who supported me the last few months. I just want to say that because I know I bothered them quite a bit all the time, whether it was standing in corners with signs or missing dinners, whatever it was, because everything we had to do. And thank you to my close team of supporters and the broad coalition that we ended up forming. And I'm excited for this journey. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you, trustee Phillips, and I appreciate this. And here I am. I just want to thank on, on behalf of the classified staff, which I come out the campus safety, the CSOs, give a shout out to all the CSOs from Hercules all the way to El Cerrito to Richmond, Kennedy, and all the schools in our district. And also the, all the classified workers who supported me from custodian to maintenance to all the departments in the classified arena. This is new. I guess I'm making history. I don't know, you know, coming up out of the classified staff. Worked in the district, been at LSU High School for 15 years. Met so many young people from all various backgrounds of life. The teachers, the principals, I went, I, I've been to five principals, vice principals. I haven't seen people come and go, but to all the staff at El Cerrito High School, I'm gonna miss you guys. Man, that was home, and it's still home for me. And you'll still see me. And to all the young people who supported me, who alumni. And to all the young people who supported me, who alumni's from El Cerrito High School and, and also many other young people who I've met over the period of time working as a CSO at all the various school sites in the district doing summer school. And so, thank you for supporting me and my family, my mom and, and all those who supported me. Thank you. And we, it's time to go to work and, and I appreciate everything what everybody has done for me. And yeah, I don't want to cry either, Demetio, you know. I'm gonna miss. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mrs. Smith Folds.
Um, I just want to say thank you. I have a tendency to be like a Baptist preacher and I promised a whole bunch of people that I wouldn't do that because that makes the meetings go long. So I don't want to be verbose. That's the new vocabulary word. Verboce, long winded. So I just want to say thank you and I appreciate everybody and I'm ready to serve. I'm ready to continue to be humble and just serve the people. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank the residents of Ward Three for giving me the opportunity to come back and to serve you. I promise to do my best and to give you my all. You are important to me. You are my neighbors and I love you. I would also like to say to my wife, who I hope is watching, I love you very much, Angela. Marist, I love you. Mr. Junior, I love you. Sterling, I love you. Amonzi, I love you. Thank you for allowing me the space and the time to serve our community. So those are my comments. Again, thank you, everyone. And we are now going to move on to item B two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And student trustee Stephanie Garcia, can you please lead us in the pledge?
Um, actually I'm not supposed to lead in the pledge, but the acknowledgement. So.
Okay.
The, the land acknowledge, the, the Native American land acknowledgement, I think, which, which trustee Garcia Avila was gonna do.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Trustee Cotton Blake, do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? That's the next item.
In consideration, I also have to pass.
Okay, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is the welcome and meeting procedures. Before I begin, I think the student trustee wanted to say something here.
Yeah, I'm supposed to do land acknowledgements. So can I do that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichonyo, Moecma, Carkin, Olone peoples, and we acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. My spirit is with you. The spirit of the people has never left. As in the past and now in the present and moving to the future, we are still here. With our love and prayers, we are still here. You shall walk in spiritual beauty forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is also the formal welcome for this meeting. I would like to welcome everyone to the December 16th, 2020 meeting of the West Coast Unified School District Board of Education. And now I'm going to read a set statement. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation. As we experiment with new ways to conduct the people's business while allowing for maximum participation and adhering to our values of respect and safety for the community. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If assessing the meeting by phone, in order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. The agenda can be translated by selecting the blue language button at the top of the agenda. Oral translation is available through the Zoom link at the bottom of your screen. Thank you very much. And now we are moving on to item four, which is the annual organization meeting. Mr. Duffy, presentation.
Trustee Phillips, I apologize for interrupting. We usually do it in Spanish as well. Could we give a chance for the Mr. Duffy or someone has a script in Spanish that can read it?
Yeah, I just want to, I do want to share that former President Hernandez Jarvis liked to share it in Spanish, but just a reminder, everything that's said from the dais here is being outwardly translated in Spanish. So what Mr. Phillips said is, has been translated fully in Spanish out to the audience. But going forward, I think as a board, we can decide if we still want to read it from here in Spanish. But we didn't have that ready for this part of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sorry, I rep.
No problem. Thank you for the question.
So item B four is the next item. That's annual organization meeting. Mr. Duffy, presentation, please.
Yes. So welcome everyone. And again, welcome to all of our new trustees. So during the annual organizational meeting, what we do is determine who shall be the president of the Board of Education for the 2021 calendar year and who shall be the clerk. And then we go through a series of approvals to make sure everything is organized and in order for the year. So we're going to first elect a president and a clerk, then we're going to appoint a secretary to the board, which is me. Then we're going to authorize signatures, develop a schedule of meetings and then the board calendar for the year. So we're going to take the first two, which is we're going to take any motions right now from any of the board members to nominate a president of the Board of Education. We're going to vote on that. Then we're going to take any nominations for the clerk. And we're going to vote on that. And just as a reminder, the clerk serves really as the counterpart and backup when needed to the president and the president and clerk work with superintendent and staff to set the agenda. So this is really the leadership body of the board. So with that said, I'll open it up to any motions that any board members would like to make for.
Actually, Mr. Duffy, what we're going to do is we're going to take your presentation. And then we're gonna, we're gonna follow, again, we're gonna follow Rosenberg's rules tonight. So we're going to take the presentation. We're going to open it up for public comment. Maybe no one has public comment. Then we're going to come back and we're going to do nominations. And I know that the agenda says motions, but these are nominations. So anyone who wants to be nominated, whether they have a second or not, can be nominated for any of these positions. So are you done with your presentation, Mr. Duffy? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item, Mr. Aurelio?
There are currently no hands raised. Sorry, one hand raised. We will go to Zalon Harrison.
Good evening. I feel since you guys are selecting presidents that Mr. Phillips should be the president. And the reason I feel he should be the president is because he should have been the president before, two years ago or a while ago. And he wasn't, the board came up with some shenanigans and he wasn't the president. For black students, they need to see a black person in leadership and I'm glad to see other black people on the board. But I feel that he has the most experience and I feel that he understands the issues of all the students in our district. And I feel that he should be the president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm sorry. There are two more hands raised that were up before the first comment ended. So we will call Mayisha Harris Gash.
Good evening. I just want to ditto, co-sign, support what my sister just said in relation to trustee Mr. Phillips.
And one more hand, Ms. Miss Baronian.
Ah, yeah, thank you. Um, unfortunately, I definitely do not agree here. By, while I do think having a black man be the president here would be a really fantastic. I do not think Mr. Phillips has the students as a whole in best interest and I do not think he should be in charge here. Thank you.
So that were, those were the hands that were raised when the item was called.
That's fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Aurelio. Now that we've had public comment, now we're at the phase for nomination. So I will call for nomination for president of the board. Mr. Christian, you just took your mic off.
Yes. Um, I'd like to make a nomination for Mr. Phillips to be the president.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Are there any other nominations for the position of president? Okay, so because there are no more nominations, nominations are now closed. Just so you know, because we're in the Zoom, when we vote, we have to vote by roll call. So we're, we're going to do roll call votes for everything, not just for this. Okay? And we're going to vote in the order that we've been going all night, which is essentially starting with Mrs. Reckler and going backwards. So Mrs. Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And number three technically, but we're going to skip to Christian, Mr. Christian right now.
Yes, all three Christian, yes.
And Mrs. Smith Folds.
Jamila Smith Folds, yes.
And Mr. Phillips. Yes. Thank you, everyone, for entrusting me with this responsibility and I promise that I will do my best to support all of you as well as all of the students in our district. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
I apologize for interrupting you. We forgot the student board members voting as well. Thank you.
You're right. You're right. I apologize. Mr. Cotton Blake?
Yes, Cotton Blake, yes.
And Mrs. Garcia.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And I apologize for not saying the last part of your last name. Now we are on to nominations for clerk of the board. I would like to nominate Ms. Smith Folds for clerk. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate board member Dimitrio Gonzalez Hoi to the position of clerk.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, see, nominations are closed. We're going to start with Ms. Smith Folds. Ms. Reckler, you are first.
Reckler, no.
And Mr. That's it. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
I abstain.
Mr. Christian.
Yes, for Jamila Smith Folds.
And Mr. Phillips, yes, for Ms. Smith Folds. Ms. Smith Folds, would you like to take a brief moment to say something like I just did? It's up to you.
Oh, oh, I was gonna vote for myself. Um, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I, do we do the students before or no?
We did not do the students and I made that mistake again. I apologize. Mr. Cotton Blake?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And Ms. Garcia Avila.
Garcia Avila, also for Gonzalez Hoi.
Now I'm nervous. What do we do? Is it a tie? Do I vote for myself? I don't know what to do now. Now the guy confused. The numbers didn't went off. I don't understand.
No, it's, it's not a tie. So just so you know, the student votes are advisory. So you have been elected as clerk of the board. And because of the majority, yes, sir.
On the Rosenberg's rules, don't we have to take the second one first before the first one?
These are not motions, which is what I was saying.
Even in nominations, you still have to take the second one first before the first one. Although I'm, I'm okay with the decision. I just want to make sure that we're following it correctly and I'm pretty sure the nomination, the second nomination goes first. And so we should have voted for me first and then Ms. Smith Folds if that failed.
Okay. Those are the rules for motions. And I know, and I said this earlier in the beginning, that the agenda states that we are to do motions for these and that's incorrect. These are nominations. So the board has.
Trustee Phillips, that's still incorrect. I just want to make sure that we're doing Rosenberg's rules correctly. The second, that's not a motion, the second nomination should have been voted on first. And I, if we have Mr. Escalar here, I just want to make sure that we're following our norms correctly. And if Mr. Escalar is here, I would love for him to give his input on whether or not we're following those rules correctly.
You know what? This is what we'll do because there's no reason for us to ask Mr. Sklar this. But if you would feel more comfortable if we did a revote, would that make you more comfortable?
Yeah, I think the outcome's going to be the same. I just want to make sure our procedures are followed correctly.
What, so the person who is chairing the meeting is the person that decides the parliamentary procedure. But if it would make you feel more comfortable, we can do a revote. Would you like that?
No, it's okay. We can move on. If the rest of the board doesn't agree on, on that, we can move on.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the next part of the agenda, we're still in item four, which is the annual meeting. For this, this is not necessarily a nomination. We will nominate the superintendent as secretary of the secretary of the board. I nominate Mr. Duffy as secretary of the board. Technically, there should not be any other nominations. He is legally supposed to be the secretary of the board. So Mrs. Reckler. Your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith Folds?
Uh, Smith Folds, yes.
Mr. Cotton Blake?
Cotton Blake, yes.
And Ms. Garcia Avila?
Garcia Avila, yes.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Phillips, yes, as well. Next, we are going to move on to the calendar. There are current dates that are already set for January. Those dates are January 13, January 27, February 10, February 24, March 10, March 24, April 14, April 28, May 5, May 19, June 9 and June 23. Those are the days that are already set. Can I please have a motion to affirm those previously adopted dates?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Ms. Reckler?
Is there an opportunity for discussion about the alternate calendar proposed?
I apologize. Yes, there's an opportunity for discussion.
So there was an alternate calendar proposed? So there was an alternate calendar proposed, and I would like to say that I would be open to trying this. I am interested in these study sessions where we're allowed more time to get deeper into the into the details and would be able to prioritize a number of important topics, um, in and we would have more time to discuss them. And we would, uh, be able to broaden our understanding and to ask deeper questions and, um, potentially wouldn't be rushed. And so I would, um, entertain more discussion on that.
And Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
I'm so sorry. My internet cut off for a second. Could you repeat, uh, Ms. Reckler, what you said? I missed half of what you said.
Sure. So there was an alternate calendar proposed that does include a number of study sessions, which I think is worthy of us discussing and considering adoption. Uh, it would give us a chance to get into deeper details on matters of great importance to us. And I would support, um, that calendar and, um, I'm looking for other board members' feedback.
I think that, um, it would be a good discussion for our retreat. Um, and maybe what I would suggest is that we move for move forward maybe with this calendar, and if we want to change it, we have a discussion at the retreat for this proposal, unless we want to hear maybe from staff as to why they think this would be a positive change. I'd be happy to to hear from them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Next is Mr. Christian.
Yes, I would say the same thing, um, along with, um, uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Um, this, I'm on same, um, same pages what he just mentioned.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Mrs. Smith Folds?
No comment at this time.
Mr. Cotton Blake?
Uh, I have no comments at this time.
And Ms. Garcia Avila?
I also have no, um, comments at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll just briefly say, um, I do agree that we should have, uh, study sessions. And I I think that we will, uh, and I think that we can have a conversation though, uh, at the retreat and not even necessarily just at the retreat. We could have a conversation in this space at different times about what retreats are necessary as well. Uh, but I do agree with adopting, uh, the current schedule, uh, and then having more conversation around that. Do any of the other board members have any follow-up comments?
Uh, the only follow-up comment I have is to ensure that any calendar we adopt is aligned with LCAP budget, all the required things that we have to do and that we're given appropriate amount of time to get the materials, the prominent time to discuss and make informed decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, it sounds like there's no further discussion. The motion was made, uh, it was seconded, we've had discussion, and that motion is to adopt or affirm the previously adopted, uh, schedule, which, uh, I've read the dates. Um, and now we're on the question. So, Ms. is Reckler, can you please begin with the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Mrs. Jamila Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Mr. Cotton Blake?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Ms. Garcia Avila?
Garcia Avila, yes.
Mr. Phillips, yes, thank you. Um, that motion carries. The next motion that I am asking for is, uh, and identify additional dates for 2021, including, these are meeting dates. I'm gonna read the dates to you, July fourteen, August four, August twenty-five, September eight, September twenty-two, October six, October twenty, November three, November seventeen, December eight, December fifteen. Can I have a motion to please, uh, adopt those additional dates, uh, as read and stated in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by, uh, Mrs. Reckler and seconded by, uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Discussion, uh, Mrs. Reckler?
No comment.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Uh, no comment.
Uh, Ms. Smith Folds?
No comment.
Mr. Cotton Blake?
No comment.
And Ms. Garcia Avila?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, um, and I don't have any, uh, comments either. So on to the vote, Mrs. Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And you guys could just go in order.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All three Christian, yes.
Jamila Smith Folds, yes?
Mr. Cotton Blake?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
And Phillips, yes. The next item, uh, not item, but the next sub-item here is board organizational retreat. Uh, and the date that we have tentatively is the ninth of January. Uh, is that correct, Mr. Duffy?
Sorry, yes.
So can I have a motion to adopt, uh, January ninth, uh, as our first board retreat?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do any, uh, members, including trust, student trustees, have any discussion on the ninth date? Okay, seeing no discussion, Ms. Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to budget hearing, uh, for June ninth, that's the date proposed by staff. Uh, can I have a motion to adopt that date for our budget here?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes, motion carries. Next, budget adoption, June twenty-third is the date proposed by staff. Can I have a motion to accept that date?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Reckler, can you start the vote, please?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes, thank you very much. There's no date tied to the superintendent evaluation. Um, what I would suggest is that we put that into the closed session item, uh, to talk about, Mr. Duffy, does that work for you?
That's fine. I also have contractually just mid-year by January thirtieth and final by June thirtieth, so you could also motion that if you wanted.
Okay, so, um, we'll just put those, we know we have to do them, um, so, and we don't have a date set with them, so we'll put them in our next, closed session agenda item, because it's regarding his evaluation anyway. Um, and so then the final actual hard date that we have here is the annual organization meeting, um, which staff is proposing to be on December fifteenth. Can I have a motion to adopt that date? Of the fifteenth for the annual work meeting?
So moved.
Is there, thank you very much. Um, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes, thank you very much. Uh, we are now done, uh, with this item. The next item is B five, roll call. Mr. Duffy?
Absolutely. Um, so, welcome to the meeting. Let's take roll call. Uh, President, uh, Board Member and President, uh, Trusty Phillips?
Present.
Uh, Board Member and Clerk, Trusty Smith Folds?
Present.
Board Trustee Reckler?
Present.
Board Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Board Trustee Christian?
Present.
Student Trustee Caden Cotton Blake?
Present.
And Student Trustee Stephanie Garcia Avila?
Present.
All President accounted for.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. Uh, the next item is B six, report slash ratification of closed session.
Uh, there is no report out of closed session this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. That takes us to the next item, which is B seven, agenda review and adoption. There really is no presentation that goes along with this, but there may be public comment on it. So I just want to ask, is there public comment?
Sorry, I was muted. There are no, uh, well, one hand just raised, one hand. So let's call the one, uh, Ms. Baronian.
Are we able to change the, um, action item as to move up, um, earlier, the summit TAM renewal?
What, if you would like to actually pull an item off of consent, uh, you can do that. And I know that normally, uh, we don't give the public an opportunity to do that, but that is, you're right. Uh, so we are going to do it from now on. Uh, but that's, that's really all you can do is pull an item off consent if that's what you choose.
I I don't really know what that means. I know if we were in a normal board meeting, we would write down the items, and then you guys would see if there was a lot of people you'd move an an agenda item up earlier. So I don't know how it works on here.
Oh, there's a, there are some items that are listed on the consent calendar, and the consent calendar is item, uh, C. So if there's something on item C that you would like to have the board discuss, then you have the ability, anybody has the ability to say, take this off of the consent calendar, because anything on the consent calendar, there's no discussion. Um, so if you want to take something off the consent calendar because you want discussion, then you can do that.
No, I'm good. Thank you. I just didn't know the procedure here with the Zoom. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So, um, before I begin. Thank you very much. Um, before I begin, I'm just gonna ask, uh, the board members, starting in order of Mrs. Reckler. Ms. Reckler, is there anything that you wanna, wanna pull off of consent that's on there?
Yes, I'd like to pull C five. And I would like to move up F four approval of superintendent position description so that Mr. Brown and company don't hang with us all night.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Phillips. I would like to pull, uh, C two contracts.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Christian?
I did not have anything to pull.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith Folds?
Can you come back to me? Is that an option? So I can take a minute to look at it or no?
Yes, I could come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Mr. Cotton Blake?
Uh, I have no changes at this time.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Garcia Avila?
I have no changes. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I think I'm good. Meaning no changes right now. I think I'm good.
Okay, um, I do have some changes that I want to propose. And the reason why I want to propose these is this agenda that we have, um, is an extremely long agenda for our first meeting. Uh, and there's no way, um, realistically that we can get through all of this in one night. So there's some things that I would like to take off of the agenda. Um, and it's not that these things won't come back, uh, but we can't conceivably do all of this in in one evening. So, uh, that said, I will, uh, begin to to go through those, uh, for you all. Um, and it starts with C two contracts, not all of the contracts, um, the elevation, uh, contract that Mr. Gonzalez Hoi pulled, I would like to, I would like us to just take that off of the agenda for tonight. Uh, because I don't think that we're gonna actually be able to to get to this and and do all of these things. The grip contract, I would like us to take that off of the agenda for tonight. The YMCA contract, to take that one off. The Ed Fund Contract. And then skipping down to C five. Um, not the entire item, but just, uh, court by law nine two seventy, which means that we would keep the resolution on, but that specific bylaw, uh, would come off. And again, all of these things will come back. It's just that we can't possibly get through all of this tonight. Next would be C three, and I said that a little bit out of order, just because I moved things around in my own notes. I want to actually move C three to the end of, um, what would be the end of the consent calendar. Um, and I want to move E three, which is the first interim presentation. This may sound a little funky as I'm going through it. Uh, but it'll make sense as we start to go through it. So what will happen is the cash flow presentation will happen. And then after that presentation, we will do the first interim, because they really kind of go together, instead of separating those conversations. After the first interim, um, we'll do the superintendent, uh, job description. The student, uh, the superintendent report would be after that. I'm not changing the order of that. Um, I want to move the student report to after the superintendent's report, so the reports are all grouped together. Um, just so the meeting stays kind of more fluid. The distance learning, um, item, which is E one, I want to take that off of the agenda for this evening. The E two item facility review, I want to take that off of the meeting agenda for this evening. All these things will come back. Um, and then the final one that I'm gonna take off the, uh, agenda for this evening is Summit. And I just want to explain very quickly why, uh, Summit, uh, it's the same reason for all of the other items is, you know, we can't possibly get through. This is, this agenda has about two meetings worth of stuff. You know, it may be more packed into one agenda, um, and it's not really fair to this board as a new board to have to do something that an experienced board couldn't do either. That said, we will have to have a special meeting, uh, to deal with the summit, uh, petition. Uh, I am thinking, uh, next week, um, on Tuesday. But we can talk about dates and we can work that out. I'm just letting you all know that we will have to have a special meeting to vote on the summit petition. Um, and those are, um, the changes, and I know it was a little unwieldy, but I promise as we go through the meeting, it will make sense. Can I please have a motion to, uh, approve that agenda with those changes?
Sorry, I know there was a lot there. I just want to make sure we're capturing those properly so that, um, we can make sure appropriate staff is here or not here. So, in the last part, you had the superintendent one moving up, you had summit being pulled. Was there any other, uh, summit being tabled, really, not pulled? Is there any other discussion or action items that was, sorry, I wasn't fully clear?
Yeah, what I can do, Mr. Duffy, um, if you want, is I can just email you this, because I have this typed. Uh, I I was typing it out for myself, so I could just email it to you. Would that work for you? And then you'll have it. I mean, I could reread it and email it to you. It doesn't matter.
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay, you want me to reread it and email it or just email it?
I, if you just reread it, the the last, I got, you know, If you just reread it, the, the last, I got, you know, I think we got, I, I was with you up until we moved the soup job up, then Summit. I just wanted, just those, those three discussion and five action items, just want to make sure we get those right.
Yeah, no problem. So, just a quick recap. So C two, which is Contracts, from Contracts, the Elevation Contract, the Grip Contract, the YMCA Contract, and the Ed Fund Contract, to take those off of the agenda for this evening. Ms. Reckler wants to pull the Seneca Contract. There were two Seneca Contracts, Ms. Reckler. Did you want the Grant one or the Ford one?
No, I did not say anything about Contracts. Mine was C five.
Sorry.
No problem.
President Phillips, I was, I was the one that pulled the contracts.
You, you said C two. Okay, I apologize. So, Elevation is coming off for tonight. The Grip Contract is coming off for tonight. The YMCA and Ed Fund Contracts are coming off for tonight. And then on C five, Board Bylaw nine two seven zero is coming off for tonight.
And can I just make a clarification so we can, for the board members? Because I know we use the term pull. And usually when we use the term pull, we say like, we're going to pull it so we can talk about it at the end of the meeting. If we're going to table, that means we are, we're going to, we're not going to talk about it tonight, right?
So, so when I'm used, when I'm using the, the word pull right now, I'm, I'm saying pull it off of the agenda. That's what I'm using the word. That's what I mean right now.
Well, I just want to clarify to make sure if any of the other board members wanted a discussion rather than off, that they clarify as well.
Right. Ms. Reckler.
For C five, I just have a question. So I don't need it tabled or anything like that. I just have a question. Thank you.
Right. I'm just asking for us to bring back nine two seven zero because I have more things with it too, and it'll end up being a longer discussion. And we're trying to condense some of this so we have a successful meeting tonight and don't get bogged down in more than we could actually chew in this meeting. So that, that's why. It, it'll come back if you don't mind, Mrs. Reckler. Is that okay?
No, it's perfectly fine. I just wanted to signal my intent by what pulling meant.
Okay, thank you. So then C six is another one.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think Trustee Cotton Blake has something to say.
Okay, and I will, I promise I will call on him. I'm reading these back for Mr. Duffy, because he wants me to read them back. So C six. That's one, and I'm saying pull as in pull off for this evening only, Mr. Duffy. And then where it kind of moves around just a little bit, okay, is we're going to take C three after C thirteen, right? So it'll go C thirteen, then it's C three, then it's E three, which is the first interim.
Yep.
And then it's F four Superintendent Job Description.
Yep.
The student report, which is normally B eight, that's going to go after your report. So the reports are actually all together, like clumped, okay? And then you have E one, which is Distance Learning. I'm saying we're going to pull that off of the agenda for this evening. And then, then you have E two Facility Review, and we'll pull that off of the agenda for this evening. And then we have F three, which is Summit, and we're going to pull that off of the agenda for this evening.
Got it. And just a reminder, we did move the student board member reports up because it has often taken us a long time to get to them, and they often then have to leave because they have exams or early things in the morning. So if we're going to move that down, let's just try to be respectful of their time so we can get there as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Cotton Blake.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Duffy. I just wanted to comment on the same thing that we have a lot of obligations as students as well. That's why it was moved up to begin with. And if it's possible, we could keep it there as our comments are very brief.
Tonight, just because you asked, we'll keep it there. But I promise these meetings will not be as long as they usually are. And that's and I, I don't want us to get bogged down on, on what the agenda looks like. I'm just doing this so we can move forward. But we can leave that exactly where it is. That said, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
We pretty much have the discussion. So, Ms. Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Oh, three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. So, that said, I believe we are actually on to members. Go.
Student Board Member Reports, yes. Do you want to start, Mr. Cotton Blake?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, WCCUSD family, our new board members and Superintendent Duffy. I am proud to say that I have completed my last first semester here for my senior year. Now, with that being said, I'm looking forward to several events coming in the near future, including tomorrow's Kwanzaa Celebration, hosted by the African American Student Achievement, the Office of African American Student Achievement. Now, this community event will be held at 6:00 PM and can be viewed via Facebook Live at OAASA WCCUSD. Also, as I work in partnership with the Office of African American Student Achievement, we are preparing to host a financial literacy program in the spring that is geared towards teaching financial literacy to our African American students, but will benefit all students within West Contra Costa. This program will also help address our commitment to race and equity work that we are continuing as a district. Now, at this point, I have not taken the time to directly address this in the past, but I feel like I am inclined to highlight the importance of student voice in our decision-making as a district and not forget who we are here to serve. Now, with that being said, I am proud to say that the All Student Congress, or ASC, led by Tshaka Meriwether, is giving our students the much-needed representation. Now, the ASC provides an opportunity for students across the entire school district to come together for a monthly dialogue with the superintendent and staff. Now, we will continue to discuss our current educational experiences, as well as explore opportunities to positively impact our campuses and communities. And each school has two nominations for representation on the ASC. And we will meet monthly via Google Meets or Zoom, typically the first day, oh, the first Friday of every month. Now, this month's meeting will be held this Friday, December eighteenth, ten thirty AM. If you haven't done so, please reach out to your students and principals for nominations or contact Youth Commission at WCCUSD.net. Now, with my focus on inclusion of youth voice on the WCCUSD School Board, I was very disappointed to see that an agenda item regarding the resolution for the student trustee position was less, left out of this week's agenda. Now, while I know that our district staff are working hard for the betterment of our students, I hope that student voice is not suppressed or lost in the process. And I hope that we will address this resolution in our next board meeting. Thank you all.
Trustee Garcia. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
For your report.
Thank you, Kayden. I really admire you a lot. You're so amazing and such a pleasure to be working with you. As for me, I just got recently accepted to Sac State. So, woo, yay. Also, at school, I've been working really closely with our equity team, and I'm one out of the two students. I wish there was more students, but you know, one is, or two is better than that. Our voice is definitely being heard there. And it's nice working with adults for inclusion and curriculum and stuff like that. And also, I do agree with Kayden that it was a bit, to me, a little bit disrespectful. You know, him and I have been working really hard to not only extend our terms, but also add more voices onto this board. And that's it. Also, I just want to say that I'm not really feeling great today. So just want to put that up there.
Thank you very much, student trustees, for your report. That brings us to the next item, which is public comment. Item B nine.
How much time would you like for this, Trustee Phillips?
Twenty minutes, one minute and thirty seconds per person. And just so people know, the twenty minute comes from the bylaws. It's not something that I'm just pulling out of a hat.
Okay, well, we have three hands currently raised. So we will start with Eric Swayback. You have a minute thirty for your comment.
Yeah, hi. My name is Eric Swayback. I'm a teacher at Lake Elementary. I realized that the Summit Renewal has been taken off of the agenda, but I came here to talk about it. So I think I'll go ahead with that. It's always difficult for me, particularly a person who's faced closure, to be recommending school closure. But that's what I would be doing in the case of Summit Charter School. For the reason that specifically, that it is not serving our students well, high absenteeism, huge staff turnover, and not serving our students with special education needs. But I would also like to point out, as the entire Rep Council of the United Teachers of Richmond, which I'm a proud member, is voted, had voted unanimously to recommend non-renewal. And the reason I am so supportive of that is that I believe that the whole charter school experiment, as it's turned out, with the influx of large monies and private corporations being involved in education, that it is a failed experiment in privatization. Handing over our public funds, our public trust, to private, to private businessmen to run our schools is just wrong. It's a failed experiment. We need to stop it. We need to return our students to our public school system. We need charter, the charter school experiment to be, to be removed. And this is a good place to start with Summit, Summit Tampa Pius, because it's not working.
Our next speaker is Carrie Schulman.
Hello, everyone. This has been such an exciting week watching COVID vaccines finally starting to be distributed. And what is even more exciting is that Gavin Newsom said that teachers would be considered as one of the priority groups for getting the vaccine. However, even if the teachers can get vaccinated, it could be months before the vaccine is available to the general public. So what is likely to happen is that teachers will be vaccinated and protected from COVID, and children are just naturally more protected from COVID. But our classrooms will remain closed because our community COVID levels are higher than the unnecessarily strict reopening criteria set by our union contracts. There were a lot of unknowns last summer, so our district took the conservative approach and set a very high bar for when we could start in-person learning. However, countless other schools were able to safely reopen with the proper precautions. Despite the fact that many of those schools had much higher levels of COVID than in our community, there has been no evidence of spread in those schools. I am urging you to change the union contracts. So after the vaccine has been made available to teachers, our schools can begin reopening. Since the vaccine likely won't be available to everyone right away, families should still have an option for distance learning. And ideally, the teachers with the greater COVID risk can be paired with those families. But please change the MOU so schools can reopen as soon as teachers gets vaccinated. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Tualu.
Yes, hi. Yeah, I would like to comment about the student proposition to have the vote rights. Although the charter school and the COVID also kind of give me interest in to give comment, but I will leave it now just for the student to pursue their voting rights. I'm just wondering, because in, in our country, when someone will be having voting rights, that means that person will have the rights to be elected. And same token, the person also will have the same rights to, to vote for the election. So maybe we can, for the student trustee, if you are eligible to vote, then why you are not running for, you know, board member to represent the area where you live. That's my comment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Hernandez Jarvis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Hernandez Jarvis. As many of you know me, I had the pleasure of serving on this board. And tonight, I'm just really here to tell you thank you for working hard to conduct the people's business this evening. I want to thank Trustee Garcia Avila and Trustee Cotton Blake for their advocacy and leadership on the board. Thank you for your support in your student reports and your continuous service. I know you will continue to use your voice to represent students across the district and use your leadership to partner with the new board members and work together. I will keep my comments brief. I believe that the new board will need to make courageous decisions in the coming months, and it is crucial to listen to students as we navigate the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one. I urge the board to bring the new, the student board member bylaw to the next meeting in January to ensure the work and voices of student leaders in our district is centered. Approving the latest revision to Board Bylaw ninety-one fifty will enable student board members to serve longer terms and add two more students to, two more student members to the current board. Thank you all for your advocacy, leadership, and partnership.
Our next speaker is Kristen Jones.
Good evening, board members. I'm just, I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see all of you on the board. I'm particularly happy to see Othari, who's from my alma mater, Elsriedo High, and also Howard University. Very happy to see Mr. Phillips back. Happy to see my former union president, also Jamila. I'm happy to see you and also Leslie. And I just want to ask that you guys do the right thing this year. And don't look at education so much as a commodity, but really look at education as something that, you know, all, all students deserve. And if you could really look at following the data, I'm looking closely at the data, not necessarily particular interest groups, but be brave enough to look at what the data is saying in order to, and have, also to have conversations around equity, like we're having at our school sites. So I hope the board is able to have the courageous conversations, put the data forward. Don't be afraid to look at the data and make courageous decisions. There might not be hundreds of parents showing up to advocate for something, but if the data is showing you that there is an inequity, I hope that you would be brave enough to do the right thing for the sake of doing the right thing. And I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose DeLeo.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Duffy. I am right now going to do a standing report for WCCAA, since we don't see it on the agenda. First of all, I'd like to thank all the administrators that are doing excellent work at their sites, mitigating distance learning. Also, starting to plan to see what happens in April, in March, if there is going to be any type of returning to school. We want to make sure we plan together. Also, I'd like to announce that WCCAA would like to sunset Article twenty-two related to health benefits. Additionally, we want to invite the board members to our sites. Please contact the principals so you can join some of the virtual classrooms that we have going on. It just takes a little bit of planning, but you can do a virtual walk through our campuses. Also, we want to continue working as this race and equity work is being done to make sure that our students are well represented and that we create the most equitable education for all the students in our district. Thank you very much. And like I said, standing reports need to be back on the agenda. Thank you and have a good evening. Um, standing reports uh need to be back on the agenda. Thank you and have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Ernesto Umana.
Good evening, um honorable board of trustees and congratulations on your elections. My name is Ernesto Mania and I'm a resident of El Cerrito and I have been a teacher at Summit Tam for four years. While I understand and respect your decision to table Summit Tam's renewal, I just wanted to express my disappointment. It was suggested that the meeting um would happen next week and I just want to remind us that many folks will be less available next week as they are on winter break. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Joseph Glazer.
Hi, so good evening. My name is Joseph Glazer. I'm at Hercules Middle School District Teacher of six years. I'm urging the board not to renew Summit Mount Tam's charter. Number one, they have a chronic absenteeism and suspension rates which are very high and they're on a downward trend. Um, in terms of the progress of the schools on downward trend. Second, Summit enrolls consistently fewer English language learners than the district as a whole by a wide margin. They also reclassify very few of their English learner students. They reclassified fewer than four percent compared to the district's nearly ten percent. Measured by state provided data, their ELL program is a failure. This should give the board pause to reconsider the charter. Third, their attrition rate, student attrition rate is very worrisome. It's said to be the highest of all charter schools in our district. Students are leaving Summit for a reason. Finally, the UTR rep council voted unanimously to oppose renewing this charter. We do not need a parallel publicly funded. Publicly funded privately managed school system, mediocre performance on state level priorities, poor results for English language learners. And unusually high student attrition. These results make a clear case that the Summit Mount Tam Charter is not serving all pupils. Please vote to not renew this charter. Thank you.
Our next speaker, William McGee.
Thank you and good evening, honorable board members, superintendent, staff and community. Just wanting to say uh good job to our student board members for always keeping me refreshed with why we are in this work. Also, congratulations to the board for being selected and elected to the board. Just wanted to also tell you guys that I loved the background. Of the photo that you guys took at the wonderful Dejounte Middle School and that beautiful mural that our students and staff and families painted. As trustee Cotton Blake mentioned, we are having our Kwanzaa program. Our Mafanikio Academic Coaching Program will actually be hosting it. It'll be available via Zoom and on Facebook Live, so we encourage you and the community to attend. This will be a great opportunity for you all to learn about this black holiday. As well as our ASAT African American Site Advisory Team will be hosting a Kwanzaa celebration during the traditional days of Kwanzaa. December twenty-sixth to January one, they will publish a schedule with Zoom links, so we're hoping that the community as a whole will come. Thank you to our district, Mr. Aurelio, HR, UTR for helping us out with an intervention program that I would rather call a student support program. That we are looking for teachers to help our children learn how to read a lot better. So we will be sending out another blast and trying to get that taken care of and get more teachers. And lastly, just thank you to the classified staff for feeding our children, office staff for listening to our community, district staff for support. Admin staff for leading and everybody else. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Peck.
Good evening. Um, once again, I'm a parent of a high school student in the district and. I want to urge this new board to commit to revisiting the MOU that the prior board agreed to. That severely limits our ability to begin to safely bring students back even in incremental ways. I hope that the board will closely track the growing evidence from around the country. On small group cohort based models that have proven to be safe. Including outdoor learning options and other creative options that other districts in California have implemented. Thank you.
And finally, last one, Carlos Taboada. Carlos Taboada, you can unmute. One, one more time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Carlos Taboada. I'm a retired teacher. I taught in our high schools. For twenty years. And I am um taking my time to, first of all, congratulate the whole board. In order to urge you very dearly from the bottom of my heart to stick to your principles for which you were elected. And urge you not to renew the summit uh charter. This is a proven failed corporate experiment and we don't need to throw away, keep throwing away. Just on the case of Summit, another four million dollars per year. To continue this, as I said, and others before me have said, a failed corporate experiment. Our blatant attempt to privatize our democratically controlled system of public education. And once again, congratulation to all the new board members and the re-elected board members. And let's keep the fight to defend public education. Thank you very much.
Trustee Phillips, that concludes comments. I believe you're muted, Mr. Phillips.
I am. Today I was saying thank you very much, uh Mr. Aurelio, and thank you to everyone who called in uh to give their comments. Uh, that brings us to our next item, which is our consent calendar. Uh, and I'm just gonna walk us through this because this is the first time that we're doing it together. Uh, a few minutes ago, we pulled some things off of the agenda. Uh, that are listed under consent. Uh, the items that are left. Um, that's what we are going to be voting on and we will pass it. As one. Large motion. Okay, and we already gave the public an opportunity to pull things off of consent if they wanted to do for discussion. Uh, and that didn't happen. So right now I am asking for a motion. To pass the remaining items that are on the consent calendar. And I'll read those items for you just so everybody understands what they are. Okay, C one donations. C two is contracts. Under C two contracts, what's left on the consent agenda is college board, the college board contract. The two Seneca contracts, that's Seneca for Ford Elementary and Seneca for Grant. And the Tyler uh contract. That's what's left under C two. And then C four is warrants. C five is revisions. What's left under C five. Is the resolution. The board policy is not there anymore. What's left is the resolution. All right, then we move on to C seven, which is signatures. That's still on consent. C eight personnel changes, that's still there. C nine, comprehensive coordinated early intervening services plan. C ten, the Fairmont closeout. C eleven, the professional services contracts. C twelve is the Crespi closeout and C thirteen, the Fairmont contract. Those are all what's still left on consent. So can I have a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez for making the motion. Is there a second?
Reckler, second.
Thank you very much, uh because this is the consent calendar. We're not gonna have any discussion. Uh, we had an opportunity to do that before with the polls. If people chose to. Uh, so that said, Mrs. Reckler, can you please start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hall, yes.
Authori Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, now where we are, because some things moved around, right? We're on item C three, cash flow. Mr. Wolf, this is your presentation, I believe.
Thank you very much, President Phillips. I'm bringing up on my screen, it's rather small. Um, the cash flow report. This is something we will bring every month for information. The reason that we need to monitor cash is as of today, the state is still deferring. Over ten billion dollars that is owed to public education. They're going to ask us to put it in our budget, but not give us the cash. And so this is the result of those deferrals. I'm gonna make it a little bit bigger at the bottom, so you won't be able to see each of the months on the top, so that the public can see what. Is happening there and I'll try to scroll down just a little bit so that we can see each of the results there. At the bottom there. Hopefully that is slightly larger. To show and this is the last year, so let me go to this year so that we can show the correct year. Um, twenty twenty-one is showing negatives in every single month. The reason for that is we don't know when the state would actually pay us back. And so I believe I shouldn't make up some guess. It's better to leave it exactly as it would be if they didn't pay us back, so we know what we would have to borrow. What we do know is this, we, this is where we started the year. We had an ending cash balance of twenty-six million. You go into August, September, October, if you continue to scroll across. You can see where we're sitting now is our lower year there at the eight million. There's then quite a bit more money that comes in as property taxes are received. And so you can see the state that we end up with a much larger. Where our challenge comes is when the deferrals start. In February, you'll start to see our ending balances drop. Down with less revenue coming in to where we would end up. Here in May at just over four million. Some of our money in the treasury is in um securities, others is in cash in the county treasury. If we get. Close to eight or nine million, we would have to liquidate those um treasuries. It's a simple action that the board would do. We're working with the county office. The county treasurer on that, but we would need to, if the deferrals stay, borrow. But to finish the year with positive cash. Right now it's nineteen million. What we do know, and I'll talk about this in the budget presentation in just a moment, is that we anticipate that the legislature. And I'll put this in the Friday memo as well, will buy off some of those deferrals with the extra revenue that's coming to the state. What we don't know is when and how much. So we'll continue to monitor if we need to borrow. The board will need to adopt a resolution. To borrow from the county treasury and that would need to be done in the first board meeting or second board meeting in March. And I'll stop there if there's any other questions on cash flow.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Wolf. So we just had the presentation and now. Is an opportunity for board members to ask clarifying questions of Dr. Wolf. This is not the discussion. But questions. So we will start with uh Mrs. Reckler.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, why?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, no comments.
Mrs. Smith Folds.
I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. We may end up having to borrow from the county nineteen million. Four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Is that correct?
Correct. We would have to borrow cash. It would then um be paid back in July with our property tax advance. But there would be a small interest charge to the district for doing that and we would borrow a little more than the nineteen. To protect us for anything. The the biggest danger is not the budget. If you run out of cash and you can't make payroll. That's when a district gets in trouble. And so it's my job to make sure this board knows. Well in advance if there's a cash issue because the state is not providing us the revenue that we're supposed to have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Smith Folds, Mr. Cotton Blake, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions at this time. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Garcia Avila, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions right now. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. Do we have public comment on this item?
There, oh, well, there was one hand raised and the hand just disappeared. Zalon Harrison, are you? She's back. Here we go. Wait, all right. The hand goes up, then it goes down, so I'm not sure if Zalon is. There she is. Okay.
I see.
I don't really um understand what, there was, I don't know if it was a good or bad presentation. I was looking to um understand it a little bit more. But I just know this, every time we get to these seasons and you explained it different. By the spring, we don't have any money. We're getting told we don't have any money. And I know it's different reasons and different um circumstances at this time. But I'm just looking at patterns that this district develops when it comes to deliver both services and budgets. And every spring come after December, we're broke for some reason, some reason. I don't know and I'm just learning. So I'm just observing. That's just something I observed.
That's the only comments for this item.
Thank you very much. Um, now that we've had public comment, we're going to move on to the board discussion of this item. Uh, Mrs. Reckler, this is the discussion period. If you have things you would like to say.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, why?
I don't have anything as well. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Uh, nothing at this time as well.
Mrs. Smith Folds.
I don't have any comments right now.
This is easy. Okay, um. Mr. Cotton Blake?
I have no comments as well.
And Ms. Garcia Avila?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had the discussion, um or there was no discussion. And now I am asking for a motion to accept this report.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. And as I'm saying this, I realize that I kind of did that backwards and I do apologize for that. Uh, but the motion's been moved. It's been seconded. Uh, Mrs. Reckler, will you please start the vote for us?
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hall, yes.
Authori Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes. The item motion carries and we are moving on to the next item, which is E three, the first interim presentation.
Thank you, President Phillips. Let me get my screen back up and move this to presentation mode. So tonight I am presenting combined the first interim budget. The whole process for moving forward in the budget and I'll try to answer some of Ms. Harrison's questions about what happens in the spring. We're also going to present to the community the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. And then answer any questions. So I'm gonna jump right into it to try to get through as quickly as we can to move forward. This is our third official budget report that's required by statute. Um, it is the actual expenditures as of Halloween. There, the next time we will bring an official budget, there will be a review in between and I'll explain why in a moment. Will be the second interim budget, which is the data as of January thirtieth. Because we are qualified. Meaning, and I'll explain that in a moment as well, we do have to do a third interim, which is pretty much what is going to be the public hearing as well. Um, for the adopted budget in June, which you just adopted the state, we'll do the public hearing and the LCAP that night. Then come back two weeks later and adopt the twenty-one, twenty-two budget and LCAP. It really needs to be noted, the only time we present actual final numbers. Is the unaudited actuals report that we did in September. Everything else is a combination of what has happened. What we think is gonna happen and projections moving forward. So there's always gonna be changing numbers each and every time. So the certifications, there are three types. A positive certification means the district can meet. All of its financial. A positive certification means the district can meet all of its financial obligations in the current year and the next two fiscal years. I'll remind the board that a fiscal year for us is July 1 to June 30, not a calendar year. And so that means that we can meet all of our obligations through June 30, 2021, then 2122 and 2223. Qualified means that based on our projections, we may meet our financial obligations for the current year or subsequent. And if you're not positive in any one of those, you're qualified. Negative means the district, based on its projections, will not, they'll be unable. So the may, shall, will are really the key delinators in the qualifications. So what has changed since we went through this process? Back in June, right as COVID had began, the state expected a dramatic drop in revenue. They expected to lose $30 billion. And so their budget proposal to all school districts was to have a 10% cut in our LCFF. That's how we adopted our budget. CARES Act was announced, but they had not given us the total amount. We had put in our budget 13 million that we were aware of. We didn't know how much more was going to come. We were planning to use the OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employee Benefits. And so this is the money that we spend each year to pay for retiring medical insurance. We pay that out of our general fund every year. We do have a reserve fund that you can use in an emergency. Last year, we did use that reserve fund. So at some point, we should have a conversation as a board, when we have additional revenues, do we want to replace the money that we use there? We were planning to use it again in the current year. Then the world has changed. As we moved to September, the state adopted a budget that was a 0% COLA, but LCFF was not cut at all, other than not getting the cost of living, and that's what COLA is. However, they deferred $12 billion, meaning that the state is telling us we have to count it as income, but they're not going to give it to us. The CARES Act was quantified, and we were able to put another $20 million above the 13 million into this year's budget. What that meant was we're not going to use the OPEB, the retiring trust this year. So that 15 and a half million is staying in the trust. We still used it last year, and we closed the books with $35 million above our 3% required reserves. So we have our 3% reserve in Fund 17. We have an additional 35 million that is in what's called a committed category. There are two categories for reserves. Assigned is where you make a designation that we plan to use it for this. Committed means it will be used for what is said. And the only way to change that is by the Board of Education formally voting to move the money from committed to something else. So I want to make sure that that's very critically understood, that it was with the unaudited actuels committed just to cover any deficits as we go forward at this point. So the budget update. The legislative analysts came out a couple of weeks ago and projected that state revenue is going to be 26 billion better than we thought. They use the word windfall. So the new definition of windfall is 4 billion less than last year is now a windfall. So if you have a $4 billion cut, it's a windfall. In other words, we're not really seeing more, but we're certainly not seeing the cuts we planned, and that does help our out years. President-elect Joseph Biden has hinted at significant aggressive supports for public education, potentially a second round of CARES Act funds, though today, the number for education keeps going down. So hopefully, that will change. He's alluded to paying the full federal share of special ed. That's going to be important when we go to the numbers. And the conceptual tripling of Title I, that would be a significant deal for this district and the students that we support. The common message from all of our advisories, which is FICMAT and the county, there are that we need to still budget for flat funding, no additional revenue. We don't have to budget for the 10% LCFF, but we should also plan on a zero COLA. We do have some concerns in the second year based on enrollment, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So this year, we've been building the plane and we're in midair. We continue to have to do that, but our plan has worked. What we started back in September of 2019 has put us in a position where, talking to the county office and Bill Clark in the last week, we are one of the most stable and secure budgeted districts in Contra Costa County. We actually went from the one side to the other, that they are not concerned about the pathway we're going if we stay the course. And that means fiscal discipline and a structure that's aligned to the correct priorities as we go. So this is just showing our trends. And so what you've seen is in 2015, 16 was the last year, we had a large surplus where there was more money left at the end of the year than we had before. And what was done that year is the dollars were placed into that OPEB trust and into Fund 17. Immediately after, beginning in 1617, we started the deficit spend. 3 million that year, 17 the following, 13 in 1819. Last year, because we did receive CARES, we ended up pretty much flat, small surplus 372,000. This year, when we adopted the budget in June, we thought we were going to be deficit spending 13 million. As of today, we project that we will end with an additional 3.7 million. So as I said, we need to at some point have a discussion. Where do those dollars go in reserve? Do they pay back 71? Do they pay back OPEB to save for the next rainy day? Do we use them for something else? There's a lot of needs, and that's where the board can direct us. So this shows the ending fund balance, how much it's changed each year. Again, you can see we projected in 2021 that it would drop by 15 million. We're now projecting that where we started the year will actually be 3.7 above as of today. So the SACS forms are very complex. They're not always accurate, but I tried to help the public see how things change. So you can see the first arrow where this is, this is what we thought with the 10% reduction in LCFF, 262 million from the state. When they took away that cut, our revenue moves up to 283 million. There, the CARES Act, we had 13 million in there. We added the other 20, so you can see our federal revenue jumps up to 53 million. You can also see OPEB was planned to be used, meaning that we transfer the money from Fund 71, which is a different fund, into the general fund to cover those expenses. We've removed that transfer, so there's less revenue on the other local revenues. So that's how all of those revenue changes show up in the state forms to see. And this revised budget is what was presented at the unaudited actuels. And then we continue to refine, oh, this position's vacant, oh, that position was incorrect in the budget. We found this, and so we make small adjustments at each interim. So you will see that this number is not the same as that number sometimes, and sometimes it is. Depending, revenue doesn't change a lot unless something unique comes in, expenditures however do. And so here are the big changes in our expenditures. When we adopted the budget, we had certificate salaries at 151 million. It's now up to 153, because grant and site-funded positions are now placed back in the budget. Those dollars were always there, but they were sitting in the 4,000s or the 5,000s, or carryover hadn't been attributed yet. Carryover gets put in revenue and expense. The other thing is, all of the one-time CARES Act expenses, the PPE, the technology, all the different things that we've been buying, mean that we're spending more on stuff, so the 5,000s and the other pieces. So you can see those numbers of expenditures go up. That's natural in a budget to have that happen. But again, we wanted everyone to see where did this show up on the budget piece. This is a chart that we've shown quite often. This is the cost of doing business each and every year. If we do nothing, that means no new program, no new anything, this is what we're going to have to pay. So for next year, step and column of our employees that are just another year with us is about 1.3 million. STIRS actually goes down a little bit, and the reason for that is because there's a STIRS rate decrease that was built into the budget, but that goes away in 2223, the rate discount. And you can see that all of a sudden, we have to pay 2.4 million a year ongoing in that second year out. You can see PERS goes up. Routine restricted maintenance, we're required to take 3% of our revenue and transfer to maintenance each and every time, and so that's why that number goes in. Depending on what things are, it changes around. Declining enrollment, you'll notice that it's a very small number for this year and next year, because we're held harmless to our enrollment from 1920. We will then have a different enrollment in 2223. So that, all of these are negative numbers. These are new expenses or lost revenue. Special ed, the cost of serving students continues to go up. They have very specific needs that we must meet. It's averaged between 2.7 and 2.8 million a year, so that's built into there. We currently operate at a deficit in food services. Because we're running what's called Seamless Summer, where there's universal feeding, we're receiving more revenue, so we're not running a deficit in this program. But our normal day-to-day program spends $2 million more than we bring in. And so in 2223, we have to put that back in as a cost there. Workers' comp insurance continues to go up, that's why that's there. And then program contributions for cost of living. So here's our projections as we move forward. Our enrollment from two years ago was 27,963. We do not get paid for every one of those students. We get paid based on the percentage of students that attend school each and every day. This is a very important number to understand. So our rate back in 1920 was 94.13%. So you take 27,000 times 94%, that's what we get actual dollars for. UDP is the unduplicated count. These are our students that are free and reduce lunch, English learners, foster youth. You only get counted once. Our rate was 70%. So look to this year. Currently, our enrollment is down 537 students. The majority are in grade seven, nine, and kindergarten, with the vast majority being kindergarten, who we believe exist, but chose not to come to school this year and will return next year. But our funding would be based on that 27. Then you multiply by the ADA percentage. Our ADA percentage, when we did this several weeks ago, was 91%, not 94. But I need to explain that we had 1,000 students start the year that did not have immunizations. Under state law, they're not allowed to enroll. We did not turn them away. We served them, and we continue to serve them, but we code them as absent for accounting purposes, so that we are not getting funded for them. We're working with our partners in Safeway, and I want to thank President Phillips for getting that connection. We were able to do an immunization fair. We're down to just under 500 remaining. Safeway is going to continue to provide immunizations over the holiday break. We're scheduling students to go, and we're going to do another drive-through fair in January to try to get the rest of them, at which point we will then try to advocate to the state to give us the rate that they should have been counted as. Our UDP, when I published this, was 67%. This is the lunch forms and the multipurpose income form that we've been out doing. As of this morning, it was up to 69.8%. We've already brought over 1,100 more families have completed it and are now eligible. I believe we're going to get it back to the 70%. Fantastic work. I want to shout out to Marin Trujillo and all of the principals and our school community outreach workers who are working tirelessly to connect with our families to fill that out. And I think it's really important that everyone hears the Herculean efforts of our employees. So this is our multi-year projection. This is important information. If you take a look, what you see is our projected revenue. This year, we projected to be $394 million. That includes CARES Act, that includes any of our carryovers. Next year, the CARES Act leaves, so our revenue drops to 358.9 million. Our expenditures this year are 391. A lot of those are one-time expenses. We will not pay for those again. Some of them are positions that are with what we call soft money. If you have a position that's paid with a grant or one-time funds, it's a year-to-year position. We bring a resolution every March or April to notice those positions until such time as we can verify funding for the next year. So we do reduce the expenditures down to 372. I have a cut in here, because if we make cuts, it changes the MYP. We would be deficit spending as of today 13.9 million. This is prior to the governor announcing his budget in January, where all of this will change. And I suspect it won't be as dire as it is here. We start the year with 48.4 million in our ending balance, plus the 14.7 in Fund 17. And you can see we would end the year, next year, with 34 million. We would have had to dip into that committed reserve by just over 5.4 million, because it went from 35 to 26. This is why that's an important number, because being able to use that for two years allows us to smooth some of the challenges. You can see in here, though, that we're not using OPEB until 2223. And this is assuming no CARES Act from this federal government, no increase in revenue from the state of California. And then it does not include any cuts that we might make, whether they be through attrition or actual budget reductions. And we're going to continue to be very frugal in what we do or do not spend for new programs until we have a balanced budget. But I wanted to show you what would happen if we do get a CARES Act there. And so I took a smaller number than we did get this year and dropped 25 million next year for CARES Act. Should that come in, we would end up with a net increase of $11 million. You then take the CARES Act out the next year. You would then probably not need OPEB if you did some cuts, but you would have a structural deficit in the third year, not the next one. And you would be able to continue to move that problem and do it over a couple, three years. And hopefully, by then, the state might have their act together. So we know we can meet all of our obligations this year. We know we can meet them next year. We can meet them the following year, but there are concerns out there that if the state does cut because of our enrollment loss and those immunization students or our unduplicated count didn't get up fully, and it's still a little lower than we thought it would be. We got a couple more days to get there. We could have additional cuts come, so that's why we still need to maintain a qualified status. Our strategy needs to continue the same way. We need to always be looking at what cuts we can do until the state adequately funds education. We need to really consider the fact that right now, we have a very solid voice. The immunization clinic went national. There's about to be an article about us and our technology initiative. That's a positive. We are being asked how we're doing things on budget. We have a platform. I truly believe we have the right community and the right board to have our voices heard. And I would encourage the board to reconsider bringing on some advocacy support to help channel our voice. And if that's something the board's interested in, we can bring an eye, we can enter into a contract to do that. The other thing that we need to continue to do is invest. We need to invest in programs that are going to support. We need to invest in programs that are going to support our students. We need to compete with alternatives that families are looking at. There are other options that we need to utilize, whether it's our retreat or other things to talk about what we might want to invest in, including the underutilized properties that we have. We continue to use funding shifts as one-time monies come in. We try to use them to push that structural deficit another year into the future so we can sustain as many positions and services as possible. And then we need to build our reserves, utilize things like that committed, and then consider rebuilding the OPEB so that we continue to have that to protect our retirees as well as protect our district should there be another rainy day. So our next steps, we'll continue to monitor our cash flow, but we really need to spend the next six months focusing on teaching and learning in that distance environment. Currently, COVID is surging. We've had more than almost 2 million new cases across the nation in eight days. To give you an idea statistically what that is, more than 2% of every COVID case in America since the pandemic began has happened in the month of December, in the last week and a half. We need to really focus on enrollment, attendance, student engagement. We need to continue our outreach and communication with our community partners. We need to really have that genuine two-way dialogue. We need to plan next year. By the end of January, we should be able to announce, these are the programs we want to offer. What do you want, families? Let's get you enrolled, let's get you planned, and let's get that staffed. We need to continue to invest in data. We need to have data driving every one of our decisions. Couple months ago, the board invested in a couple proof-of-concept data projects. I am pleased to tell you that the one with Munis to create some internal dashboards has worked. It is live, and the data is accurate. I can actually find some information I never could present to you. We're ready to bring to you a contract for Phase Two, which is to now take it to our stakeholders, being our principals and our departments, so they can have actionable data. And then Stage Three would be to create public-facing dashboards, better than the budget transparency tool that are real-time information. We're also in the middle of doing a mapping project that also was approved by the board to map Power School to Munis, where we can take a student and their performance directly back to the budget and be able to bring metrics for money. So we need to continue that investment using these one-time funds to build these ongoing systems that we can sustain. We need to continue to work with our employee associations, maintain labor peace, keep our focus on distance learning and doing the right things for students. So I'm flipping now to the LCAP for Parents, and I'll go a little quicker business. One of the pieces there was each year, we are required now to produce the LCAP. This year, it was suspended, and it will come back in June. We kept the LCAP goals in there, and we are required to do a budget report for parents. It's a very simple report. And I'll, I'm going to go through this presentation, then I'll show you the report and come back there. And we were asked to show what was in our LCP. That's the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, which is really our reopening plan. That was not a budget document. That was a plan for how are we going to do school in 2021. But we did need to put in what were the costs for that. This is the best way to look at the two plans. On the left, you can see all of the things that are in the Learning Continuity Plan that are not in the LCAP. On the right, you can see the things that are in the LCAP that are not in the Learning Continuity Plan. And I want to thank public advocates, because this is their slide, not ours. We used it in a previous presentation. I didn't brand it, so I want to give credit where credit is due on the pieces that are in the middle there. These are the recommendations that the LCAP gave us last year. Even though the LCAP was suspended, we maintained our LCAP programs throughout everything in there. The other request from the board was that they wanted more information about the whole budget in the LCP and the budget reports for parents. We haven't completely gotten there, but we did do better. This is our LCAP priorities. Our LCAP supplemental and concentration funds is 50.3 million. Again, we get those funds as additional funding for students that are at risk based on free and reduced lunch, English learner, or foster youth. Federal CARES Act, these are the same slides we've done before to explain where it went. This is the summary of the data. At the back of this presentation is details by what are called object codes. Object codes are just the main category on how the dollars were spent as we go. So here is the rest of the budget. This is my first attempt at trying to demystify the district's budget. Here's how we get paid. The state gives us 320 million. 287 million of it is what's called unrestricted, meaning there's not as many rules on it. Though the LCAP is part of that unrestricted, I think that should be very important. When the money is given to the business office as a check, it has what's called Resource 0000. That's general fund. However, the law says you need to spend it on the students that generate it. So we create our own resource, 0670, and we take that 50 million out of the base. That's really important that you understand why that happens. So 287 is not the real number, it's really only 237. We then get an additional 11.5 for specialized programs. Lottery, which buys textbooks, mandatory costs. ACES is our after-school programs. And then CT is career and technical education. Special education, the state provides 17 million for students with disabilities. And then other state money, those are redevelopment facilities monies that kind of go play in Louis Fries's house, so we don't really count those as anything. The federal government does provide funding to us. They give us an additional 7 million for special ed. So I want to make sure that we capture that money. 7 million from the federal government and 17 for the state. We get 24.8 million to serve our special needs students. We then get the Title I, Title II, Title III monies, 12.2 million from the federal government. CARES Act this year, 34 million. Local funding, we have some leases and some grants of 3.4 million. The parcel tax, which pays for athletics, counselors, library services, 9.9. Two, a little over 2 million of that goes to charter schools per the settlement. And then local taxes, which is our redevelopment agency, funds those, again, go to Louis Fries. So this is just another way of looking at these district revenue from the state. The state of California gives us 137 million. Then another 51 million for the Education Protection Act. County tax is 83 million of it. ERAP is another program to equalize funding. Redevelopment agencies, you can see 15.6. Then charter money comes to the district and then gets transferred to the charters. That's 21.9 million. It's not actually revenue that's ours, it just passes through as the fiscal agent. So here it is in picture form. We get unrestricted 233 million in the base. Remember, there's some special ed in there as well. LCAP supplemental concentration, 50 million. Other state, very small. Here's what we spend that total amount on. So when you take a look at what we're talking about there, it's 291 million. But we spend in unrestricted 292. So clearly, that's a deficit. We spend 100 million on certificated salaries, another 34 million on classified, 62 million on the benefits that go with those positions. We must transfer the maintenance contribution of total revenue. Even though it says 4%, you're going to go, wait, you said 3% earlier. It just happens to be in this chart, it's four, but it's 3% of all expenditures. So that's 10.5 million that leaves the general fund and goes immediately to the restricted side of the budget. We spend 22 million on things like the lights. And then we provide 61.5 million more for special ed. So remember, I said that we get 24.8? We spend another 61.5 on top of that. So there's your real cost of special ed. This comes directly from the general fund, because we're not getting it from the state or from the federal government. So the next one here allows us to take a look at. I'm sorry, mine. There we go. So here, we want to delay the LCAP against the general fund. We talked about certificated staff, we spend 100 million. Of that 100 million, 22 million of it is built into the LCAP for people. So when we wonder what is happening with the LCAP and what, how are those covering the priorities? Because the state doesn't provide enough funds. The benefits is another 11. We spend an additional 6.5 above and beyond the 17, above and beyond the 20, the 7, above and beyond the 60. Another 6.5 is services that come out of the LCAP. Then other contracts, most of these are school level contracts, 5.8 million classified staff is the rest. Here's the restricted side. There's where your 61 million comes over. Your federal revenue comes in, your other state restricted, your other local, the CARES Act, and then the maintenance comes in. And here's what we spend it on. Certificated, 54 million, classified, 28 million, employee benefits, 34 million. And then services, all of the different special ed, non-public agency, all the different support that we have to bring in, transportation, all of those contracts are built into there. And so what you can see is we get 164 million, we have to spend 172. So we still go the wrong way with that. With that, I just want to quickly bring up the LCAP for parents. If you'll give me just one moment, I will share that one, and then we will be done. The LCAP for Parents is a very simple report. Let me right here. And it's sort of small, but all it is, is the pie chart showing again all of our revenue from the state and federal, and how much of it is state revenue versus federal. So you can see that, and this is just a summary of those charts that we talked before. And this is why we did all of that in the PowerPoint, because this report template is not very valuable. It then says, how much did you put in the LCP, which was our back-to-school plan? Well, we calculated about 125 million was what we listed in there, of which 84 million we listed was for high needs, that was the CARES Act, and that was the LCAP funds. It then asks you one more question. The previous year, what was your budget for LCAP? Ours was 52.5 million. How much did you spend on those students? This has to do with the bill by Shirley Weber that was not passed by the governor to, if LCAP money is not spent, it needs to carry over and go back to the kids that did it. We did do that, even though the law didn't require us to. So we were just under a million two. And so you'll remember that we put 900,000 of it in the African-American Student Achievement Budget and another 300,000 to support central LCAP support pieces. And so that is the parent report. It was a lot of information. We were trying to respond to many of our stakeholders that really wanted us to try to make the budget a little more transparent. I hope we accomplished part of that. Thank you for enduring. And I will take any clarifying questions, President Phillips.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. So that said, now we are to the point where we're able to ask clarifying questions as a board. We're going to go in the same direction that we have thus far.
Phillips, we have some, we have a hand raised. Do you want to do comments prior to discussion?
No, what we're doing right now is clarifying questions of the board. When that's done, then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll move to board discussion.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Reckler, it's on you if you have any questions.
Okay, stop me, because I'm not sure what's clarifying and what's discussion. But would you briefly describe the oversight that comes along with a qualified budget, explaining the county office? And talk about our favorite acronym, FICMAT?
Certainly. So FICMAT is the Fiscal Crisis and Management Team. They are an independent agency that the state calls upon when districts are in financial trouble. When you are qualified, the county office can appoint what's called a fiscal advisor. This is an expert in school finance that will give the CBO, i.e. me, advice on what to do. We do have one, it's not official. His name is Michael Bishop. He is the lead instructor in the USC School Business Management Program. What qualified means is that we need to consult with the County Office of Education. Bill Clark is the Associate Superintendent of the Business Side on any financial decisions. I need to, from my role, make sure that any new expenditure I'm consulting with them, that both they and FICMAT agree that we're in the right position. We were hovering with the concern of negative when I started. And so I had to meet multiple times with Mike Fine, who is the leader of FICMAT. And we did that at the county office pre-COVID and via Zoom after. They no longer are calling me. They have decided to just say, call us as we go, but we are monitored as part of our qualified. It does affect ratings. We were lucky, we did not get the ratings drop for our bonds because we were showing the right direction. But it can make it harder to borrow funds if you don't show a positive arc.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't really have anything else to clarify, so I'll just wait and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gonzalez, why do you have any questions?
Thank you, President Phillips, I do. Dr. Wold, on, for the public, on page 11, where you point out the expenses. On line four in Books and Supplies, I see that we're planning on spending about 15.5 million this year in books and supplies, which is higher than we've spent in prior years. Can you explain why that is? Is it because of technology use, or are there other reasons? Thank you.
You are correct. Chromebooks fall under the capitalized equipment, so they fall in the 4,000 object code. And we've bought millions of dollars of Chromebooks and hotspots for students, and that increases our one-time expenditures.
Thank you. My next question is around the data tools. You said that you are updating different tools, including the ones in our website. Can you tell me a little bit about the timeline for when those will be ready?
So the first contract we entered into was what's called Power BI, Power Business Intelligence. It allows us to take Munis data. Munis is our business management information system. It's where our position control is and where our budget information goes in. We can put information in there. We've struggled, like pretty much everybody that has Munis, getting anything out. Same issue with Power School, which is our student information system. So the business intelligence maps all of the fields in Munis and starts to create what you would normally think of as a Google spreadsheet. It starts creating dynamic dashboards where we can start to mimic some of the reports that we get out of the state forums and see that data today to know whether there's something incorrect in Munis. Part of what I'm finding is our position control needed a lot of work, and we've taken a lot of steps. But we still need validation. If I brought Regina Weber in here, who's our Director of Business Services, she would tell you that the vocabulary word of the month in my office is reconciliation. I, I'd like you guys to start doing it, please. And so this is going to help us to actually do that work. What the next phase will be to get data in the hands of our principals and department chairs. Right now, they work off Excel sheets that are called cubes. That may, that's not live connected to Munis. So if somebody doesn't manually update it, they don't have accurate budget information to make decisions. I want to move those and digitize them. That's what we're going to do the second semester, create that. Once those are operational and people are able to use those, the third phase would be to start creating the reports that the public would like to be able to see themselves and have those be And have those be static reports that get updated periodically on the webpage where the public would go. So it's a twelve to eighteen month cycle to get these things done. You don't just fix date overnight. I'm really pleased that we did in two months, we got the dashboard up. Now we have to validate that we actually mapped everything right. And that takes time to go in and check every field and every data piece. And then the other project is mapping Power School to Munis. The idea being that we'll be able to match teacher credentials to the assignment they have. Match student enrollment to the teacher FTE in Position Control. And then ultimately track students all the way back to the contracts that the board approves. And be able to then pull for those students, the academic or um, attendance or whatever data we want. To be able to bring forward better decisions. That project is going to take longer, it's a much more complex project. But I'll tell you right now, the team that we hired is farther along in two and a half months. Than I've seen in three years of work trying to do this. And I genuinely believe we're going to get something that is going to answer the questions that the board is asking.
So to clarify, the new citizen transparency tool that'll be on the website and new dashboard. That's going to be up and ready for the public to use and access in, in one year, or did I?
I would say sometime next school year, we should start to have things. We still have the budget transparency tool. That is active, but this one is one that I need to spend time with both the stakeholders that are external and the board. To define what we want it to show, because we will be building it from scratch, the way we want it to look. And so it will take a little longer to build something that way.
And then the other tool that you were talking about, because my next question was going to be about a position control. Uh, you say it's going to take a little bit longer. So can you tell me what we're doing different right now? For position control, since we don't have that tool yet. Because obviously, uh, the reason why I'm asking this question is because, you know, a couple of years ago, right? One of the issues that led to the budget deficit was the lack of position control. So um, could you just talk about what we're doing now, since we don't have that tool?
We created a allocation sheet where we mutually worked with our associations. That is our staffing allocation sheet. That aligns, every position has its own number and only one person can go in that position. If it's not authorized on the sheet, you can't have that position. With the dashboards that we're doing in Power BI, we're validating to make sure those are accurate. So there aren't the ability to have additional positions that you don't know about showing to the budget. I'm making sure that all encumbrances, and an encumbrance is where we pre-expect to make an expense are actually happening. We're also, one of the things we're doing in that Power BI is creating a vendor report to show whether or not we've actually paid them. Because one of the things would happen is you wouldn't pay bills until all of a sudden you got all the bills in May and you didn't know. And you run out of money because you weren't tracking it right. We're building systems in place to check that.
Thank you. That's, that's my last question, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
Yes, uh, one question I do have is, uh, Dr. Ward, is about attendance. Uh, what does it take to get attendance up? Because I know you mentioned that in, in the presentation.
I believe attendance is driven by engaging students. Which means giving our teachers all of the tools to deliver the most successful lessons they possibly can. It's by having programs that attract families and keep you engaged in wanting and be, wanting to be part of that school. So it's back to producing what we need, giving the tools and the staff to go into our teachers. To make what they do every day engaging, and we know how difficult it is in distance learning. Those are the two big pieces, and then creating that triage team for those that are struggling. To find out what they're struggling at. Attendance goes down when you get frustrated educationally. And if you get frustrated educationally, and we don't find an intervention to reconnect you, pretty soon you're lost. And that's where you start to see that attendance, and it's also behavior. It's the excessive excused absence is what I call for no better term, the mommy note. You have the sniffles, you don't come. We're not seeing that as much now. But we have to change that behavior in the young grades, that no school is your job. And we're going to make it so valuable for you to want to be here.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Uh, Mrs. Smithfolds, do you have any questions?
Um, I think I may have questions, but it's just trying to figure out how to ask the questions. Because it's a little bit uh, daunting at the fact that it's phrases like, kind of like, kick it down the field or kick it down the line. Like, okay, so cool, my kids can eat on Monday and Tuesday, but don't look at Wednesday. Because I'm not too sure if you're going to be able to eat on Wednesday. So it's like, that's a little bit disturbing, because it's like, okay, you can do it here, this year and next year. But then the third year, we're not too sure. So I know that that may just be how budgets go. But I don't, it's not very comforting that that's how budgets go. So I would like more clarification around that, more, more uh, more soothing to the fact that we are looking to be okay more than just Monday and Tuesday. We're looking and have plans to be okay, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
I see our board president smiling. I think he's gonna say ditto in a second to, to you, um. This is the challenge of how to present budget. Um, you, you're absolutely correct. We would like to provide a much more soothing tone. I tried to keep the right balance that you don't want to end up with everything being pessimistic. But at the same time, you have to be realistic, and this is why we can't add things today. We cannot add expense, because we know two years from now, we're going to be negative spending, more money than we have. So we've got to sustain ourselves. If we start to get reserves growing, then that's when you start to add programs. You go, okay, we've got a balanced budget. There's more money at the end of the year than when we started. It's time to add. At the same time, you don't want to have, leave ten million dollars every year that you don't spend on the kids that need it today. So it's, it's a delicate balance. We will certainly work to get you the information so you can make the best recommendations to us. There, and part of it is, we're always having to make projections and none of them are perfect. I will know a lot more for you come the fifteenth of January. When the governor does his proposal, which starts the legislative season. And I'll talk about that in the January board meeting.
Mrs. Smithfolds, is that your final question?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton Blake. Mr. Cotton Blake?
Yes, um, thank you for the presentation as well. A lot of the questions that were just asked. Cleared up a lot of questions I had as well, um, so I appreciate that as well. Looking at the projections and how uh, it will be represented in, I'm looking forward to that update in the January meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Garcia, Abella?
Thank you. The same questions that I had, um, they were asked by Demetrius, it's, it's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now that uh, the question portion is over, we are going to go to public comment, Mr. Aurelio.
Yes, we have uh, two hands raised, so three now. We will go to Zalon Harrison.
Hello, um, first question I had, the, the students that you had identified for having immunizations and not counting them. Um, how many of those students haven't engaged in our school at all or have low engagement with uh, during COVID? That, and I want to know how many of them are black, so they're, don't, don't have immunizations and they haven't engaged. And we're just counting them over in that pile, you know, I don't know if that's going on. And another thing, that nine hundred thousand, you, that, that didn't been played with a lot of times. It's under special education, but it's under there for all the kids. And then it's not under special education, and is this, is this the same nine hundred thousand? Or is it two separate nine hundred thousand? I just need to be clear on what that is. Because it seems like it's moving around on what it's going to do and who is it going to be serving. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Salata Hunter.
Hello, good evening, Dr. World, thank you for the presentation. I have comments, but some are clarifying questions. So when you talked about the um, the qualified and you said May, and it said may not on your slide. I'm not sure if you can clarify that that was supposed to be may not. Um, when you talked about being qualified. And then also for CARES, the twenty million that we have is kind of helping to pad the nineteen million deficit. So is that saying that we're going to be, we would have been higher in the deficit? Um, had we not gotten the CARES funds? Um, piggybacking on what uh, Ms. Harrison said about the nine hundred thousand. I would like clarification on that. I'm looking at the ASAT reports. I'm not seeing that, but I'm also seeing that there are two different availables. Um, at the bottom line, and I just wanted to get clarification for that. Um, also about the mapping. You talked about that, and I wanted to know if that was connected to the tagging that we talked about for African-American students. And is that what's going to take longer? Because I know we talked about January in order to get that done. So if you could just give a little bit more information about that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is on a phone, um, ending in seven, four, one, two. When you unmute, please identify yourself with first and last name.
Hello, my name is Malia Hall. And um, I have some questions. First, I want to say thank you, Dr. Wold. I am very appreciative to hear about Power BI. I think that school districts around the nation need to um, utilize the power of BI. So I'm very appreciative of that. I'm certainly most looking forward to having the outward facing um, dashboards. For members of the public to be able to um, access data that relates, that applies to their families or their, or um, information that they want to find, so that it's easier to hold the school district accountable. I also would like to know if it's possible to itemize line five hundred on the, line fifty-eight hundred on the budget. Which is where legal services are included. From a number of individuals that I've spoken to and my own experiences in the past with West Contra Costa Unified School District. I believe that there are legal fees and lawyers who are being paid for purposes that are not for the good of the school district. And it's more, um, it's been used to, I believe, and from many others, uh, teachers to harass teachers. And in particular, to harass um, teachers of color. I, I think that the public deserves to know how much is being spent on legal fees. To, I think, harass um, teachers. Um, also, uh, let's see. I also want to, um, I also just want to congratulate all those who were elected to the school board. And I'm looking forward to more accountability um, in the next uh, two years. Thank you.
That concludes comments for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Now we're going to move to the part that would be, it's not, there's, this is not a motion. This is uh, an item that was for discussion, so we're going to move to what would be the discussion part. And this is where you can make comments about what you heard, what you think, what you want to see. So we're going to begin with uh, Mrs. Reckler.
Okay, so I do have a couple of things. Um, one of them is though, is although, you know, our income is somewhat limited, uh, there are things that we can do. Or remember Christian talked about attendance, the other thing we can work on is enrollment. And there are families out there that we need to attract. And nothing stops us today from the seventh grade or the ninth grade figuring out what we need to do. Uh, figuring out how we can make it more attractive, figuring out what's holding people back. I fully, fully understand what's going on with kindergarten right now. If I had a kindergartner, I would be like, there's, forget it. But what else can we do now? How are we reaching out to those families? How can we ensure that they're, they are going to come to us when we're open? What can we offer them to, you know, think of us or whatever we need to do to boost enrollment? That's something that we can control. I am interested in income generation, for sure. We've had this discussion before, presentations have come forward. I don't know what happened to those, but I think there are some opportunities there. And since the hour is late, really, the only question I have at this time though is reopening costs. Uh, moving all this furniture around, uh, you know, like, who knows what we've, what's coming? Where are costs for that, or what are we doing um, to save or, I don't know what we're doing, so thank you.
You want me to answer now?
So right now, uh, what I want to get us in the habit of doing is when it's board discussion, it's board discussion. So I want us to get in the habit of that. Uh, but we definitely will have that conversation, uh, but right now we're in board discussion. Mr. Gonzalez, who do you have comments?
Thank you, yeah. Um, I mean, I appreciate, you know, trustee Reckler mentioning some of the things I was gonna mention. I am concerned about when reopening happens, I do know that districts that have reopened have spent a lot more than expected and a lot more than budgeted. So I do hope that as the conversations move in that direction. Dr. Wold, do you guys really consider looking at the budget, looking at how reopening affected other districts? And to what extent it affected other districts, so that we prepare for the same thing? Because uh, with concern of, of facing another deficit in a couple of years or in a year. I'm concerned it's only going to grow with how much we're going to have to spend to reopen schools if that's what happens later on. And you know, I do want to mention about the data tools, you know, if we can, you know, get those in as quickly as possible. I do have a concern about updating our tools in a year. We need to build trust with our budget, with our community. That's one of the things that I think they're in the campaign trail. All of us heard constantly is the budget and the distrust the public has with our decision-making on the budget. So to me, it's really critical that we get those going as quickly as possible. I know it's not as simple as saying it. So I appreciate you working on that, uh, but I would hope that we can have some urgency around it. And then as soon as we have, um, we have a robust training program for families and staff to use them. I still don't know how to use the citizens transparency tool, and I've been deeply involved in the district for many years. So, so you know, these tools, hope they are also user-friendly as they come up. So that again, we can build that trust. Um, and I had one more comment, which I forgot, which is fine because of the time, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Christian?
Yes, um, I just want to go back on the attendance. That's one area we definitely have to do a campaign in to build up our attendance and providing the resources to our young people. I just want to say, before we got into this pandemic, you know, we were, we were already struggling um, with our attendance. And um, just working in a high school over a period of time to see so many of our young people um, falling through the cracks. And I know so many young people that I helped and, and stopped them from falling through the cracks. But it's just only one of me. And um, but we got to make sure we provide the resources. And now that we in this pandemic, we still have to do an outreach. Still connect with families. I know many other families that live in all the different parts of Richmond and um, throughout the area, but it's a matter of doing outreach. And providing the resources and connecting and, and it goes back to the fact of, of the student will say, do you care about me? We have to be in the caring business. And also that we, you know, understanding mental health, a lot of the issues, a lot of things fed our young people. And, and I've been with our young people from ground zero to see a lot of these things. And so um, we're going to have to step it up and go to the next level and think outside the box on a lot of things and seeing what other districts are doing, um, and the state. Uh, in the state of California and maybe outside of California. But we're going to have to think outside the box and begin to build and grow and develop our district. Um, and even when we come up, when we come up out of this pandemic. We're going to be a strong district. And it's going to take all of us to make it happen. So, so it's a lot that we have to do, but right now we got, we got work to do. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Smith.
Um, I think for me, it's one of, it's a matter of being good modelers. Because we need to model what a good budget looks like because deficit, deficit spending. Like I don't do that in my home. Like if we don't have it, we don't buy it. If we can't afford it, we don't buy it. And I'm very clear with the people in the home that. We can't afford that. No, you're not going to get that because we don't have it. So I think we need to be good modelers of that behavior because we. We're the school district, like we're teaching and we need to be, I think, not only are we teaching, but we need to be taught. Because if we don't do it on our family budgets, then we need to be very careful not to do it with taxpayers' money. And with these kids' futures and their investments that we're putting into them. And we need to be transparent and honest about just because it's hard, doesn't mean it's impossible. But sometime you have to tell somebody it's hard. And I don't want us playing with monopoly money with people's aspirations and hopes. If we say that we have this amount of money for African American student achievement, then that's what they really need to have. For African American student achievement. If not, I don't think we need to say it because that's playing with people's emotions and value and planning and hopes. And it's, we have to be clear. So I just want us to be good modelers and I want us to be able to be taught. How to really do it in a, in a way that's transparent and honest. I would like to say that I'm going to have to be convinced. That we are doing well with a budget because I don't see it on the numbers in the, in the little slides. And I don't see it that we're doing well. I want to trust, but that's about building public confidence. So for me, I want. I'm able to be convinced, but you're going to have to do some, you'll have to date me a little bit with the budget. I need to be wooed a little bit because right now I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Cotton Blake.
Thank you, um. I guess one thing that I'm noticing that seems to be a consistent factor when it comes up is. We're simply making too many leveraged investments into either programs or different facilities. Something that we bring to the table within the budget. And just from a basic financial standpoint that I know of. Making that many leveraged or borrowed fund investments is simply. Over the top and considering that we don't have enough revenue. And we don't grow our revenue fast enough to keep up with the amount of investments we make. It's simply going to turn us back around to where we were. Before this and having the same issues again and again and again, because we do not. We don't manage risk very well. Um, and that's what it seems like to me. Now, this is no disrespect, obviously to the budgeting team or anything of that nature. But this is just from my standpoint, what I see, we are not taking into consideration the risks when. Making the same purchases and the same far fetched purchases and investments time and time again. And it just continues to compile and compound over the years. But besides that, the presentation itself was very well put together and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Garcia Abala.
Thank you. I have no comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I would just say very briefly. Uh, I think that we need to balance our budget for the coming school year. Uh, we cannot keep hoping that monies will come in. We hoped that Prop 15 would pass, uh, and it didn't unfortunately. Uh, and we were banking on that money. It didn't come. We have to plan with what we have. Um, and then if additional funds come in, then we need to be thankful for that and add when they come in. Uh, but personally, um, I would like to see a balanced budget this coming school year. Um, I agree 100% that we need to be doing advocacy. Um, I want us as a board and if we can all do it together. Um, I want us doing it in pairs where we're going up to Sacramento and we're knocking on Tony Thurman's door and we're knocking on Buffy Wick's door. Um, I want this board to work, uh, in a way that we haven't before. Uh, because we're all very capable. Um, and we all have a skill set that can be utilized to actually help bring revenue into this district. Um, and I want to see that happen. Dr. Wall has brought presentations in the past around income generation, uh, including, you know, vacant properties, which are essentially lots. Uh, they're just sitting there. Um, I would like to see all of those things come back. Uh, we have some work to do because we can actually increase funds, the things that we can control. Um, we should control. So. I was the last person, um, on the discussion item. Um, there is no vote. Ms. Reckler, I see you doing the pinky thing.
I do have one small nitpicking comment, and that is, is that if Dr. World would check in with the LCAP, uh, committee. The way the dollars are ranked or in LCAP, I believe is by code or not really sure. But I would like to see it by, you know, what we're spending the most on, down to what we're spending the least on. So check with them if that, um, if they would be okay with having it ranked that way. Thank you.
And Mr. Gonzalez, I saw you too. Did you have another comment?
Thank you, President Phillips. Yeah, you, your comments actually, uh, made me think of another comment, if it's okay. One, sure, I, I completely agree with what you said, President Phillips, about the advocacy. I actually would love to see if staff could bring us a presentation on, you know, revenue. New revenues that they can think of and can work with our bargaining units that can work with, you know, community folks. Um, just ideas on how we can potentially increase our funding. Uh, facilities use, whatever it is, I would just love to see a presentation. So we start heading into the mindset of solution oriented, uh, around our budget. Um, so I would be in full agreement with that, President Phillips, and I would appreciate if staff could maybe do that in the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, boy, and I think that is a great idea and we will, uh, we will, we will do it. We, we actually, we have to do it, Mr. Gonzalez, boy, uh, because money is not falling out of the sky. Um, so that will, uh, that concludes this item. There is no vote. This was just a discussion item. Uh, I promised that we would have a brief recess so people can recharge. Uh, my time that I have right now is nine 21. Um, and I am asking if we can have a motion to recess until nine 30. Um, and then at nine 30, we will start in on the superintendent job description. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
You know, a second, uh, there's two seconds.
Oh, excited for a break.
So it's been moving seconded.
Reckler, yes.
Oh, three Christian, yes.
Jim, Jimmy Smith folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia, I would like, yes.
Phillips, yes, see y'all at nine 30.
Thank you, everybody, especially for coming back on time. I appreciate you. Um, we are now on item F4, which is approval of superintendent position description. And I believe that this presentation is coming from Mr. James Brown of Leadership Associates.
Hi, this is Jim Brown from Leadership Associates, and I want to make sure that everybody can hear me. Are we all set?
We can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Well, that's probably better off. Consider yourselves lucky tonight, I guess. It's nice, it's nice to see all of you tonight. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to update you on the progress of the superintendent search. Specifically in relation to the position description. And by the way, we want to offer our congratulations to all of you on your elections. We look forward to working with you, uh, in, in the months ahead. It's been a busy few weeks, uh, in terms of holding meetings with, I think we had over 50 meetings with various stakeholder groups. I think about 420, 400 plus invitations were sent out. We had the largest number of responses in any search we've ever done to the online survey. And we really appreciate the help of the district in Martin and Bob, Robert Jordan in getting out the word on that. So we've collected a lot of information and we've gone through it. And we've developed a position description for your review tonight and, uh, and possible approval. The position description really fulfills, uh, two major roles. The first, it's designed to show people that we listened carefully to what you said. We tried to capture as many of your ideas as possible. And we know that it looks a little long in terms of professional and personal characteristics. But this should be seen as a reflection of the great interest of so many people in this topic. And what kind of superintendent they would like to have lead the district into the future beginning next year. So, uh, it was impossible to capture all the comments. We went through them several times and tried to pull out as many as we could that would still fit within some kind of framework. Of a position description. So, uh, last night, uh, the district, uh, I had another, uh, session where people were invited to look at a draft of the position description and offer comments. And I believe you may have received a copy of the notes from that. We got one earlier tonight. And what we saw is very consistent with what's already in the position, uh, description. There are a couple of areas that. Um, in terms of grant writing and one other thing that we saw, but the big, the big ideas are all there. Uh, my colleagues, Van Garza are with, and Sandra Thorstensen and Penny Pyle are with us tonight. I want to thank them for being here. You know, we're all available to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, the second purpose of the description is to help us recruit the right candidates. Ask the right questions on reference checks, work with the board to help develop interview questions. And then finally, the survey and the stakeholder engagement, uh, summaries, everything. But this should be seen as a reflection of the great interest of so many people in this topic. And what kind of superintendent they would like to have lead the district into the future beginning next year. So it was impossible to capture all the comments. We went through them several times and tried to pull out as many as we could that would still fit within some kind of framework of a position description. So last night, the district had another session where people were invited to look at a draft of the position description and offer comments. And I believe you may have received a copy of the notes from that. We got one earlier tonight. And what we saw is very consistent with what's already in the position description. There are a couple of areas that in terms of grant writing and one other thing that we saw, but the big ideas are all there. My colleagues, Juan Garza are with and Sandra Thorstensen and Penny Pyle are with us tonight. I want to thank them for being here. And we're all available to answer any questions that you may have. The second purpose of the description is to help us recruit the right candidates, ask the right questions on reference checks, work with the board to help develop interview questions. And then finally, the survey and the stakeholder engagement summaries, everything are, we give them to this new superintendent. And we really encourage that person to follow up with all the people that participated in to one degree or another as much as possible. What we would hope is that the board is in a position to approve the description. If there are some changes that are suggested, we're certainly willing to cooperate those. We're at a point where the sooner we can get started on recruiting and reference checking, the better. And so we put the description forward. We're glad to answer any questions that you may have. And we hope we can move the document forward tonight in some fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes. Let me ask my colleagues, Juan Garza, Sandy Thorstensen, if they have anything to add. No, okay. We're good to go.
Thank you very much. So now we are at the point where we ask clarifying questions or questions that we have of the presenter. So Mrs. Reckler, you can begin.
I don't have any, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips. My question was just about student engagement and the process. I was wondering if you guys could talk about how much engagement from students we had in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
The vast amount of engagement from students came from the online survey. And we had the largest number of students participated in that survey that we ever had in terms of the conversation meetings that attendance was not, was not good in that, but the word got out to ask students to participate in the online survey. I know Robert Jordan's on, but if I remember correctly, somewhere around, and Juan, you have the online survey. I think we had close to 2,000 students participate in that survey, which is a record. So we really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much. That was my only question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Christian?
Yes, the question I have. How many classified staff were you able to connect with?
On the engagement meetings, there were meetings with the representatives of the classified staff. I think there were four or five different classified groupings in terms of the invitations that went out. And then in the survey, Juan, do you have the the figure in front of you of the degree of people identified as classified staff? You're muted, Juan.
I'm looking that up at the moment. I'm sorry. I don't have all of those numbers memorized. They were extremely large numbers in all of the areas. As soon as I find it, I'll bring it to your attention.
Okay. But we did have good participation, Trustee Christian. In fact, we did from everybody. It was really a significant amount of people that took that online survey. The conversations were all helpful, but the online survey was really proved to be an effective way. And the reason that happened is because there was a major effort on the district's part to get the word out, ask principals to work with teachers, students in classrooms and everything. It was really a job well done.
There were 425 classified employees who replied on the online survey.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Christian, do you have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, Mrs. Smith Folds.
Of the 50 meetings that you held where people could phone in and have that conversation, how many participants did you have in total?
I don't have that total. We didn't keep track of the numbers, but it was, I would say they ranged from the group side. There were several groups where nobody was there. The charter school was an example. There were other groups where there were eight or nine. My estimate would be that over the 50 meetings, we probably had 200 people participate in those. Juan, would you think? And that, we also had, that's not counting the community forums. There were eight community forums that were offered over two evenings, which is the largest number we've ever done. So I'm going to guess in terms of engagement things, probably about 200 to 250 total people.
And in some of those instances, if I may add, in particular with some of the organizations, there may have been one person who was designated as a spokesperson for that particular organization, representing many more people. They just decided to have one or two representatives by design.
Yeah, then, and sometimes three or four cases, we received a written. The group had had a prior conversation and then sent us some notes. I believe you were on one of those sessions, Trustee Mills, you know, where people did that. That was, that was a huge help where they reached out in advance. And then they sent us the notes afterward from the pre, the pre-meeting that they had before the meeting with us. So I think you were able to participate, you know, listen in on several of them, and you know, the attendance varied. It's been our experience that the online survey is the best way to reach the largest number of people. But those questions and answers that went, even if it's with one person, can sometimes be very helpful because you get more in-depth conversations that way. And the totality of the results was really significant and really gave us the information that we needed to develop the position description draft that's before you tonight.
And there were a lot of common themes and threads throughout the different conversations that I had with the stakeholder group. So that was very important. Common interest.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cotton Lake?
Yes, my question was again about student outreach, and I'm glad to hear that there was a rapid amount of student outreach on this program. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate the student participation. It's really, you know, I'd have to say it's one of the best parts of the process for us is to hear from students on this. And there is definitely a perspective that students offer, particularly as it came through a non-survey that sometimes others, others might miss on. So get the word out to your fellow students. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Garcia Avila.
Thank you. This isn't a question, but Kaden and I did not get the notes, and I would really appreciate it if we ended up getting the notes. I know we can drop our emails in the chat, but thank you.
I apologize that you did not get the notes. We will make sure that you get them, both of you. Okay?
Thank you.
Could I ask Stephanie a favor real quick?
Yeah.
Stephanie, would you send me a copy of the Native American that you talked, that you gave at the beginning? I live in a place with 14 pueblos, large reservations, and I really appreciate, I have not heard that. And I would really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you drop your email in the chat?
I will. Okay.
Thank you.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the question phase, and now we'll move on to public comment.
Currently don't see any hands raised for public comment on this item.
I am shocked.
I can check again if you want.
Please check again. I'm almost upset that there is no public comment on this. This is an extremely important item.
One, I see one.
They did that just for me. Go ahead.
All right, Don Gosney.
I'm doing this just for Mister, just for you. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Representing the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I had an opportunity to, to speak. And unfortunately, typical for me, I, I wrote down the scheduled time, half hour time that they allotted on the wrong day of the month on my calendar. Okay, but they were very gracious and gave me an opportunity to speak one-on-one. Instead of have for that half hour, they scheduled me for one hour. And then we spoke for an hour and 20 minutes. And that was extremely gracious on their part. That's on top of the 11 pages of comments that I had sent them. They were very thorough. They asked a lot of the right questions. They listened to what I had to say. And I appreciate everything that they, that they did to try to solicit information, at least from me. I say again, thank you very much.
There is one more comment. Phone number 7412. If you can unmute and identify yourself.
Hello, this is Malia Hall. I would like to just make a couple of comments about items that I think are important to consider when hiring the next superintendent of West Country Cross Unified School District. Number one, I think that it will be important to make sure that it is a superintendent who has been able to hire and retain teachers of color. I think that's incredibly important. Also, I think it's important to have a superintendent who has been able to keep down the costs of workers' compensation. Our workers' compensation costs have been increasing every year. And I can tell you that there are some districts that have been much more proactive in terms of providing safe working environments for employees. And in general, and the focus, I think, a focus that I think could really help is with special education. I can tell you that often, special education staff are not trained. Classified staff sometimes are not provided the appropriate equipment. For example, you know, sometimes they have to lift students three times a day who may weigh upwards of 250 pounds without sometimes having the appropriate equipment to be able to do that. So I really think we need somebody who's been able to keep down those costs. And, and thank you again for, I'm really excited about this upcoming year. So glad that you all were elected, and I'm very hopeful. So thank you.
That concludes comments for this item.
Thank you very much to everyone who just made comments. So now I am going to ask for a motion to approve the superintendent job description that is attached to our agenda.
I'd be happy to make the motion. President Phillips, are we going to have comments or are we going to have that after we make the motion?
So we're going to do the motion and get it on the floor, and then we'll have comments. And if somebody wants to suggest a change, then we'll do that at that point.
Okay, I would move the job description.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded, and now we're on to the discussion. Mrs. Reckler.
So I want to thank the community for coming out in full force in meetings and filling out all the surveys. Your passion and your dedication is, I can't even describe how shocked I was to understand that there were 5,000 survey results. That's just incredible. I also want to thank Bobby Jordan and Martine Flink and Ms. Haney. And I know that there were lots of other people behind the scenes that organized and called and right, they did a great job. So I really want to thank you about that. In my opinion, I feel there is an opportunity to further refine and bucket this a little better. And as I read it, I see major themes that I think could be pulled together a little better. There's ideas around visioning, instruction, communication. There's a lot of things about systems and structures. I even see a little thing about marketing that could possibly get pulled out. And so I see some opportunities to kind of really crystallize this more in the professional profile, not so much in the personal profile. But I still feel that there could still be some more bucketing and prioritizing in terms of interpersonal characteristics and some, some other communication things. What I would like to suggest is that there is a ad hoc committee created by two board members. We take a brush through this through leadership, get their best thinking. And we bring it back and we've listened to all these comments, but we bring it back at the special board meeting and maybe then we launch it. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reckler. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind moving forward with Trustee Reckler's idea. I just wanted to thank staff for all their support in pushing this forward. I know it wasn't easy and it was very quick. So I just want to say thank you. And my comment was going to be about our role as a board moving forward. But Trustee Reckler actually talked about it. So I'm okay. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Mr. Phillips, President Phillips. Yes, I'm thankful that, you know, everybody's participated in the process of chiming in on the superintendent to classify the teachers, the students, the parents. And it takes everybody to come in and, and express of what they want to see in, in the new superintendent. And also you want a superintendent that's going to connect to the community, connect with people, the students, parents, I mean, just, just overall of the, have that connection. And also, I just wanted to say, you know, we also have talent, you know, within the Bay Area and all around. So, so we just got to make sure we choose somebody that's going to, to take that torch and lead and lead. That's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Smith Folds.
I just want to make sure that when you're doing your search, that you cast a wide enough net with the understanding that there's implicit biases to who can get to a leadership position in education. There's implicit biases to who has that opportunity. So make sure that you cast a wide enough net. You can have more degrees in the thermometer and not be right for a job. So cast a wide enough net that you bring us back the options to where we can look for the person that fits best for our district. So just a wide net is what I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cotton Lake?
Yes, thank you. I also want to just say how proud I am that the participation from both ends was there, not only the outreach done by Mr. Jordan and his team, as well as me personally with peers of mine and Stephanie as well. But on the other end, that students, teachers, parents, staff like all came together to show that this is something that's important to them and something they want to see as a change in our district and making sure that we have a not only strong as an individual superintendent, but one suited for our needs. And I find that very important, and I'm very glad that our community is so engaged in this. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Garcia Avila?
Thank you. I just also want to say thank you to the staff who worked really, really hard on this and for making not only student voice, but community voice heard. Yeah, I have no comments other than that.
Thank you very much. I too want to say thank you to everyone who participated in this. Everyone who is on staff, everyone who is a member of our community and to leadership as well. I know that this is a heavy lift, but when I heard about all of the different responses that we had, I know that the work was worth it. I do have a friendly amendment that I would like to offer to the, the job description. And I know Mr. Gonzalez Hoi was the motioner, and I believe the second came from Ms. Smith Folds. Is that correct? Okay, so I think, I personally think they're minor. But on the first page of the job description, in the first paragraph, this is one, one, two, three, four, five, six, six lines up from the bottom. It's start, the sentence starts with, or the line starts with, "has a true passion for the work of public education to unite WCCUSD's diverse student staff." Do you all see that? I would just like to add the word "help" before "unite." I think it's extremely daunting to, you know, put out a job description that people are looking at and they don't live here. They're not from this area. And, and for us to say to them, you know, we want you to come in and unite everybody. They've never lived here, perhaps. They don't know people. So I just would like to add the word "help" in front of "unite." So they understand that this is a team effort. And nobody expects them to move from wherever and unite by themselves an entire community that they don't know. I want to move down still on I want to move down still on the first page, which is, now I'm on the third bullet. And it says, "will unify the entire community." Do you all see where I'm at? Again, I just want to put "help," the word "help" in front of "unify."
Okay.
Um, now I'm gonna turn to the second page. Very first bullet, "will bring a vast array of communities and stakeholders together and unify." I just want to put the word "help" in front of "unify" again. And then the last one is on the following page. It is the second bullet. It says, "will commit to engaging in a listening tour before any changes are considered." And I just want to change the word "consider" to "recommended" because there may be, the person may need to do something before they go on this listening tour. So, and I think recommended for me works because we're telling this person, "before you come here and start recommending, we do things differently." That you actually do this tour first. Those are the friendly amendments I would like to offer. Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, I'm fine with those changes, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Phil, trustee Phillips, I have a question if, when it's appropriate.
Just really quickly, Ms. Smith Folds, Mrs. Smith Folds, are you okay with those changes?
I am.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in the, the board discussion right now. And again, I want us to like get in the habit of when it's the board discussion, it's the board that, that is talking. So the motion was made, the friendly amendment was seconded by the motioner and the seconder. Are there any other questions before I call the vote? Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Phillips. I think that trustee Reckler had an idea about the job description and I just want to make sure we don't lose that. And I'm not sure if trustee Reckler was making an amendment or just a suggestion about moving forward. I just wanted to make sure that we went back to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Reckler, are you, do you want to make a motion to table this item?
Uh, I don't want to table it. I want to get two of us together to perhaps organize it a little better, maybe prioritize it and bring it back. I don't want to.
Right, but.
Table it means it might not ever come back. But I think over a couple of days, we could spend a couple of hours and kind of make it a little bit more concise. And I think Mr. Brown wants to say something.
Right, so just what you're saying right now, and I, I do understand what you're saying, but in order for us to do what you're saying, you need to make a motion to table this. Because if we don't table it, the motion is gonna go through. And I don't know how everybody's gonna vote, but if, if you want to do what you're trying to do, then you need to make a motion to table it. And I'm offering you that opportunity if that's what you like.
And then what happens next after that? If I may clarify.
So what you would say, or how to do, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. I don't want to.
So, so after it gets tabled, or if I make a motion and it gets tabled, what happens next?
So if you make a motion and it gets tabled, we won't vote on this item on this evening. And that doesn't mean that after the meeting that people cannot work with leadership or a couple of people cannot work with leadership to crystallize or that you individually, if you want to send in comments about crystallization, that, I mean, you could do that. But, 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 but the only thing is, at the time it comes back, right? It's gonna come back to the, it would come back to the board. And it may not be whatever the crystallization was that is accepted or whatnot. But if you want to do more work on it, you, you need to make a motion to table.
May we hear from Mr. Brown who's wanting to say something?
Sure, Mr. Brown.
Just a suggestion, and we've done this before and it, it works quite well. It, it would seem that the substance of the, of the position description is in, in pretty good shape. I think there were some suggestions from a couple of you which couldn't be cooperated. We could easily work with, if the board is okay, say, asking two of its members to work with.
If I may pick up?
Yes, sir.
Two of the board members work with Mr. Brown to crystallize it and refine or make it more concise. If you could allow us to post it on our website as a draft, that'll allow us to get started. And it's, it's common practice within our, within our organization. Then after it's been approved, at the next board meeting, hopefully, then we can adjust, make the adjustments and change it and it'll become the final. This would allow us to get started and some people are interested in looking at it already. And we've already begun to, uh, the recruitment process and so there's a lot of interest.
Okay, maybe not then.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reckler. And Mrs. Reckler, do you feel like you were heard and what you were saying was addressed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so it's been moved, seconded, friendly amended. The motioner and the seconder accepted those. And I'm gonna ask one last time because this is such an important issue. Is there any more discussion from a board member which includes the student trustees? Okay, so there's no more discussion. Our discussion is closed because I see none. We're going to begin with the vote. Mrs. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Autry Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you to everyone for their work on this. This is extremely important and we appreciate you however you participated in this process. That said, we're going to go to our next item, which is D1, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And nice to hear that discussion about getting it right with the characteristics of, of the next leader. I'm gonna ask Mr. Jordan to bring the superintendent report up for me. I'm sure Jose De Leon is probably not still on the call, but he had mentioned in his public comment about having, making sure the standing reports are on the agenda. And just a reminder that the committee standing reports, like the union standing reports, we do those every other meeting. So they're not on every single agenda, just so the public knows we go back and forth. So, uh, great to see everybody this evening. Just another congratulations to the new board. We showed the video. Here are some wonderful pictures from Friday afternoon. They're great pictures, really bright because it was a little bit overcast that day. So it's really great. So we can go to our next slide. Just wanted to share some recent events. I wanted to start by acknowledging the, the comments of our two student trustees around Board Bylaw 9150. So our student trustees, especially trustee Garcia Avila, have been working with the governance committee to propose new terms for student trustees. And so they've proposed terms of a year with potentially four student trustees for the year overlapping. So we're gonna bring that recommendation to the next meeting for the board to think about that, have a discussion and then potentially move it to action either at that meeting or the next. So I thank them for that work. They've been really invested in deepening their time on the board so they have more time to really become one with the board, digest and understand the material, really be a, a, an authentic part of the school board. So I think we had a little miscommunication about when that was gonna go on. So it will be on there for the next meeting. We had the swearing in ceremony on Friday. We're also sending out a three-question form to the community about returning to school. So we want to get a sense from community, just where they're at. There was legislation introduced into the California Legislature that could mandate all schools to return March 1st. So we don't know if that has legs. We don't know how serious the infection rate will grow. But just getting ready, we want to ask our community, "where are you? Are you interested in coming back this year? Are you interested only if there's vaccine? Would you go to another classroom, another school?" So just three, basically, three or four very small questions and hope to get a sense of where our community is. So much work done on the multipurpose income forms, amazing. Thank you so much to everybody who's worked on those. Huge. The nutrition services team has been amazing. I also want to share, I don't know if people noticed, that when you, the trustees, especially when you came into Dejane for your swearing in, you saw all the food that was in Dejane that's being packaged. But one of the things that I saw was just how much organic produce that we're serving, which is really exciting to be able to give folks healthy, organic produce. Also, we're also working on a board item through governance about renaming of schools and renaming of mascots. And we'll also bring that to the board. But so the board is aware, principal has asked to start an exploration process at Juan Cressby of thinking about a new name for the school. And so they're going to embark upon that process. And our board policy, which we'll share with you, starts to spell out a little bit more what that would look like, how the board would have approval of that at the end of the day. And then we do know, you know, that there are positive cases spiking. And even within our WCCUSD employee community, we're seeing more positive cases of COVID in this last three weeks or so than we've seen in quite a while. So we have to take extra special caution, follow our protocols, follow our health and safety guidelines and make sure our employees are safe. So we can go to our next slide, just some notes about what's upcoming next tomorrow. Two events tomorrow, there's, they happen to be at the same time, but you can toggle between the two. But there's the MDAC Standing Meeting, Monthly Meeting tomorrow. And there's also the Kwanzaa Celebration that student trustee Kayden Cotton Blake shared and also Director McGee shared as well. We have winter break coming up, so we will be sending, you know, some very flowery thank yous to our community and our staff, especially our teachers. This has been a long haul and the teachers are on the front lines every day working to motivate our students, being creative, doing everything they possibly can. So we really thank them as well as all of our other staff and they're, deserve a good break. The income forms will still keep pushing. It's a, you know, it's a matter of a couple million dollars either way and that really does impact us. Our next board meeting is January 13th. There's a CAC meeting, the first Monday we come back and a board retreat the Saturday after we get back. So continue to look forward to working with our new board team to get both second semester ready, whether that's in person or online, and get next year ready, build our summer program. So there's a lot to do and I look forward to continuing to work with everybody. So thank you. And again, and a one last apology to our student trustees. We will definitely have that item and definitely find a way, not just for you, but for others to invest in the board for a longer period of time. So, thank you. Thanks for staying up late tonight, also, student trustees. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. It's 10:09. We are trying to get out of this meeting by 10:30. That's not always gonna be possible, but that's what we're trying to do. There are two more items on our agenda for tonight, action items. If you all don't mind, I would like to move to those items. The first one is F1, mental health. So we're gonna move to that item now. And Ms. Hardy, I know you have a presentation.
We will try and make it short. Good evening, President Phillips, trustees. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. We are very excited this evening to bring an innovative mental health services model to you for your consideration that fills a critical gap for our students as we move into spring semester of 2021. Dr. Jody Kuick and Martine Blake will give a brief overview of our current service delivery model and then LaShante Smith will move into a description of the new pilot program. And I realized I did not share my screen. Forgive me.
While, while Ms. Hardy's doing that, just a reminder to the board that with some of the carryover dollars that Dr. Wald had talked about, we had identified some very specific areas for some extra money we had that carried over. And one of them was mental health. So we had kept about $600,000. And so this is, you know, that carryover doesn't become official until sort of November. So this is now us taking it, figuring out the plan and sharing it with you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Okay, so I actually have been, I know a couple of you and welcome and congratulations to the, to the rest of you on the board. I've been covering one of our main mental health helplines since school closure. It actually has become quite the hotline. And in addition to that, I do take the lead on the crisis intervention services for the district. And since March of 2020, these are the statistics just collected from the school psychologists and school psychology interns that we've done 139 risk assessments that actually has increased. And we even did the slide that, that is increasing weekly. And these are student safety check-ins for kids that have expressed feelings of health, of self-harm, either to teachers, to parents or to other students. And these are also kids that are saying things on Zoom and in their breakout rooms. So out of those kids, 23 elementary schools were involved, which is a big increase for us to get so many risk assessments from elementary schools. All, all of our middle schools and seven of the high schools, basically all of the high schools also reported an increase in risk assessments. In terms of the, and, and let me just say, the risk assessments here, the 139 do not include the ones that are maybe being done by our community-based organizations, our Kaiser, or some of the health insurance and parents taking kids directly in for services. These are the ones that are happening with our school staff. A hundred and seventy-nine of our kids in general education are receiving site-based counseling from school psychologists and school psychology interns. And these are not the kids that are receiving services from the CBOs on our sites or even some of the, I run five clinics, school-based clinics on our sites also. And that's not included in that count there. So we have 279 students that are receiving mental health services through their IEPs. And these are driven. And these are driven by their IEPs, they're connected to goals and objectives, we do progress monitoring. And and those students, they, those are already predetermined services by virtue of what's happening with their IEP. In addition to that, as we've collected statistics, we have more than two hundred kids who aren't currently receiving needed services. And again, this is a number that's changing where we have health center directors and principals and other people identifying kids that really do need counseling supports and services.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to speak a little bit about the current mental health services that we offer throughout the district and in collaboration with our partners. All of our students receive social emotional learning and instruction by our classroom teachers during our morning meetings as well as during our Friday wellness activities. Um school psychs, counselors and admins also do school student check-ins as needed. So that could just be checking in so students feel connected. As Jody mentioned, if a student um shares something um in terms of not feeling well or just needing someone to talk to, that might prompt a check-in as well. Each of our um sites have care teams and those care teams are responsible for receiving referrals from teachers, parents, students and staff. Um if they, if they see that a student is in need of services and then care team triages, those were, those uh referrals and refer students to um interventions, either site-based interventions or community-led interventions. We currently have a contract with Seneca at four school sites. Um their model is called unconditional education. And through that particular contract at Ford, Bertie, Stige and Montalban, that partnership is focused on preventing and reducing exclusionary practices as well as enhancing positive culture and climate practices, including PBIS um and leading climate and care teams. So in terms of tier-two and tier-three services, some of our students need additional services based on their needs. Those needs are identified through mental health assessments, trauma-informed and socio-emotional screens to determine if those students need short-term tier-two services or targeted tier-three intensive services. Um most of our students receive tier-three interventions because most of our partnerships are set up to offer those really intensive services. And so we have a gap at that tier-two level to offer our students short-term um intervention that will immediately resolve their concerns and take them back down to tier-one. As Jody alluded, we have our mental services, mental health services for students with IEPs, which include educational-related mental health services, counseling and rich classrooms and catalysts, as well as our non-public schools.
All right, and now it's to the last part. Good evening to everyone and congratulations to our newly-elected trustees. And so I'll be talking about what the pilot program will, will be and what it will look like in our district. So what we're hoping to do is to contract eight full-time clinicians through Seneca and then also a half-time clinical supervisor who would uh provide supervision to the clinicians who are providing the school-based services. And what's unique about this model is that each intervention cycle, if you think about it, will be in ten-week cycles. And then we're doing the ten-week cycles because that's what a true intervention would look like for social, emotional and mental health. So there'll be two ten-week um cycles and all schools would have access to this. So what this means is that students would be receiving these services in these cycles and data would be collected throughout. The services would be available to all of our school sites. And so this would be from students from grades kindergarten through twelve. The most important thing to emphasize too about this model is this is available to all students regardless of insurance status. So we have a bunch of students at schools and we have a lot of schools who do not have any services. And so students at those schools would have access to these vital services. And we're still refining what the referral process will look like. But so far, we know that it'll be done through the student um study teams or SST teams or through our care teams. And we will also be working with our community school directors. And then we'll have a panel of um different clinicians who are able to kind of review the referrals coming in. And then they would assign students to these clinicians who would then start the intervention cycles. Again, this is a pilot program and we're hoping to really look at this model to then determine um future models and future need and service delivery for mental health services. Yeah.
Thank you. And I think one of the things that's really unique about this model is in the past, when we've been in the brick and mortar, we've had to predetermine needs, right? So we can pre-assign clinicians to sites. But because we're in this virtual world, we have the opportunity to do a telehealth model, which allows us to have our clinicians centrally assigned. And they save time, they don't have to travel between sites in order to get from student to student, which allows them to carry a heavier caseload, a higher caseload effectively. Because it's not tied to medical status, it reduces some of the documentation needs. So again, allows more time to be given directly to students. And there's no need to establish the medical necessity that's part of the medical model. Um so we really can serve students at kind of the earliest indication that there is a need. And um we're talking about serving students through both individual and group counseling models. Because some students, what they really need is that connection to their peers. And that will reduce, you know, some of the stressors that they're experiencing. Other students may need more individualized services, but this referral panel will allow and the information coming up from the sites and the referral question will allow us to really tailor those services. And it will be goal-driven, so every student will have an individualized goal connected to their counseling. So that at the end of that ten-week cycle, they'll go back to that student problem-solving team, CARES, student study team, including the parent, and check in, has the student met their goal? Do they need a little more service? Do they need a lot more service? Do they really need to be connected to a longer-term community service? So it will allow us to really effectively work with students very early on in the cycle and to hit all fifty-eight schools equitably.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hardy. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay, um team, it's ten twenty-one, we have nine minutes uh to go. There is this item that we need to finish. Um and we need to do um the last item, which is CSBA nominations. Um and I really want us to do that. Um so we have uh representation. So I am, I didn't want to do this, I'm going to ask for one extension. Um and that extension is till eleven, which is a tough time, I think, to get us through this item and to pick our person uh to nominate for the delegate. Um can I please have a motion for one extension to eleven o'clock?
It's moved.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a second, please?
I will second, Reckler second.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh it's been moved and seconded, Ms. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Oh, three, Christian, yes.
Smith falls, yes.
And Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes, thank you so much. And we will be out of here at eleven. We're on to questions. Do you have any questions uh in the same order from uh regarding this presentation?
Um I don't have a question. I do have a comment, though, is that I'm, I'm just super excited about this. And I feel that this is one of the things that we can pull forward after COVID in a virtual slash, you know, in-person model. And there are some ways to reach more kids, you know, virtually. I don't want us to give up the, you know, the person-to-person. I mean, that's super important and sometimes it's, you know, just even being in the same room and just having somebody look at you not through a screen, that, that is the, you know, the most important. But I'm, I'm very excited and hope it goes well and I'd love to get an update.
Thank you, Mrs. Reckler. I just want to remind everybody right now, we're doing questions. We're getting questions and then there's a public comment and then there's going to be uh the, some comment discussion. So Mr. Gonzalez, why do you have any questions?
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Mrs. Smith falls.
No questions.
Uh student trustees, Mr. Blake, Cotton Blake?
Yes, um I'm very happy this was brought up as well as that we are allocating funds directly to the health of our students. I'm very happy about that and I'd love to see this work continue. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh remember, we're on questions. Uh Ms. Garcia Avila.
Yeah, I actually have two questions. Um so can students refer themselves um for these services? And how will students know about these mental health services?
LaShante, do you want to talk a little bit about how you see this kind of rolling out?
Yes, thanks for the question. Definitely, students can self-refer. And so if this is approved tonight, we want to start getting the message out to our sites um so that they can let students know that these services are available. And families know that the services are available and then we'll have a referral process that it'll be a central referral to get the services.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Um let's move to public comment, Mr. Aurelio.
There are currently no hands raised.
Thank you very much. We'll move to board.
Can I just loop back, add one thing to the answer to student trustee Garcia Avila? Just if you have any suggestions for us about how to get the word out to students, you know, we're open to that and you, I, I'm happy to talk with you. But would love to pick your brain if you think there's very specific ways we might want to get this out. So just wanted to tag on to that. Thanks.
Thank you. So we're on board discussion now, Mr. I'm looking at uh Mr. Gonzalez Hoy and I was supposed to say uh Mrs. Reckler. Um so Mrs. Reckler, because you were first tonight, uh do you have any comment? You may comments. Do you have any more comments? Okay, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy?
Thank you, President Phillips. Yeah, I just want to thank you all for this. I mean, this is actually one of the most important items I feel like we were going to look at tonight. Um it's so essential to the health of our students right now, especially with everything that's going on. Um so I just want to thank you all for, for doing this, bringing this to us. Great presentation and I hope it's successful. Um and I would like to move this item um and continue listening to comments uh from the rest of the board.
Thank you for the catch, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy. Do we have a second to move this item?
Second.
Okay, uh we are on Mr. Christian now.
Yes, uh thank you, uh Mr. Phillips. Appreciate that. The um, this is well-needed and um, you know, as I think back on a lot of students that I connected with over a period of time. Um and these services are very needed in high school and as well in middle school and elementary. And so I'm for these services and this is cool. Yes, that's it.
Thank you so much, sir. Uh Mrs. Smith falls.
Um I just want to apologize, my internet went out and then I stressed out and I'm sweating and I'm glistening because I'm back now. But I really want to say that this is amazing. I'm happy that this is happening for our students. I do want to comment that over the summer, I participated in something with LaShante for the teachers and the staff that I think also should be added to this because the meditation that we went through during the summer really, or starting in the spring and kind of went, really was a benefit to staff too. So healthy students, healthy teachers, healthy staff. Everyone needs this um type of attention to it. So I really appreciate that. So I would just want to add that. Please don't forget about the teachers and the staff with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Um student trustees, Mr. Cotton Blake?
Um I have no further comments besides just my appreciation for this. So thank you.
Ms. Garcia Avila?
Thank you so much for this presentation. It was so well put together and I am definitely available for um idea outreach. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Um I support this as well. Um the motion has been uh moved um because Mr. Gonzalez Hoy remembered we had to do that, but it's been moved and it's been seconded. And I'm just going to restate the motion really quick. This is item F1, Additional Mental Health uh Health Supports Twenty Twenty Twenty-One School Year. Uh and we are approving the contract that is attached to that. Um so on the question, let's start the vote.
Reckler, yes. Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Oh, three, Christian, yes.
Smith falls, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Phillips, yes, thank you so much. This motion carries and thank you for your work, staff, on this. Um this brings us to our last uh, I guess, action item for the evening. Um and this is F2, um Call for Nominations for California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. This uh, Mr. Duffy, I, this is your presentation.
Don't really have much, oop, sorry. I'm having some internet in and out, but I don't really have too much here, except that we do need, if folks are interested, a nomination for the delegate assembly um um tonight.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from board members, starting with Mrs. Reckler?
Might someone who's done this or is familiar with it uh give an overview of uh what you do, who you meet, do these, amount of time?
Mr. Duffy?
You know, I don't, I'm sorry that I, I hold on one quick second. Let me open that up. I, I can't see the item in front of me.
I do know there are a couple of meetings that you do have to show up for, but is there work in between? Do you, you know, just any other details?
Yep, you know, I don't have that information and we've always, that's an overset on my part. We have always had a board member who has done it, who can speak to it. And right now, uh we don't, but you're part of the Association of Delegates. Uh my understanding is sometimes you are asked to sit on certain subcommittees around, you know, safety or instruction or governance. Uh people also get involved in the planning of the annual events as well. Um there's also um committees dedicated to like um underrepresented delegates. There's um, you know, there's a Latina, I guess probably Latinx committee now, uh et cetera. So there's multiple opportunities to connect and network. Um but in terms of the actual literal uh responsibility, I don't have it in front of me and I can get it for you.
While he's looking for that, Mrs. Reckler, if you don't mind, um I'm going to go to the, the next person and we'll double back. But I do think that the delegate assembly is the policymaking body for CSBA. Um so that I do believe that. Uh Mr. Gonzalez Hoy and Mr. Duffy gets that, we're going to loop that question back in for uh Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Christian?
Uh no questions.
Mrs. Smith falls.
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Cotton Blake?
Uh just wondering, are there any specific requirements for uh?
As in like the? Mr. Duffy?
Um, I don't believe so. Um from what I've seen on the nomination form, it's just a current board member. Um and so um I, I haven't seen anything that says beyond being a current school board member, you have to have XYZ qualification.
Mr. Duffy, um thank you, Mr. Cotton Blake. Was that your only question or do you have additional questions?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um do you have the answer to Mrs. Reckler's question, Mr. Duffy, before I go to the next person?
Um yes, I, well, I have something that might be helpful. Um hold on. The delegate assembly has the following powers and duties. Adopt the policy platform every two years. The policy platform provides a broad framework for implementing the association's vision, mission and strategic directions, guides the association's policy and political leadership activities, provide testimony or input on critical issues, um elect the association's officers and board of directors, serve on standing committees. elect the association's officers and board of directors, serve on standing committees, adopt the bylaws, provide two-way communication with local board members, provide advocacy and support in the association's activities. So that is, uh, what I have for the job description.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mrs. Reckler, does that satisfy your? Thank you. Um, and then finally, last but not least, uh, Board Trustee Garcia Avila.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to go to public comment.
Must be getting, getting late. Sorry, there are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. We are going to go back to board discussion. Um, I would actually, if he will accept it, I would like to nominate Mr. Gonzalez Hoi to CSBA. I think that he would be a fine representative. And I hope that he accepts. And I hope there are no other nominations. Well, let me just, let me back up for a second. Mr. Duffy, we only get one nomination, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I hope there are no other nominations. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, do you accept that nomination?
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Um, to be honest, it wasn't like something I was super interested in, but I would be happy to take it if nobody else is interested. But if someone else is interested, I would be happy for them to represent us. So I, I, I would love to open it up if there's anybody else, but I appreciate you nominating me.
It sounds like there's. Thank you. So, um, and I think you're going to have a great experience and I know that some of the work that you've done has brought you up and down the state. Um, and I think that this will give you some increased exposure. And I think that you will find that this is very beneficial for you. So I'm really glad, uh, that you are doing this. I really, I, I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Um, so that said, he has accepted the nomination. There are no other nominations. Uh, and we're going to start the vote. Uh, Mrs. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes, and thank you.
All three Christian, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Garcia Avila, yes.
Mr. Phillips, definitely. Thank you. And I know you're going to do a great job representing us. This is like a statewide thing, man. This is big. So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. We appreciate your service. We really do. So that item is done. Um, and now we are on to, uh, G, which is, uh, comments from the board. And I wanted you to be able to do this too, because this is your first, this is your first meeting. So, uh, Mrs. Reckler.
Are we also going to do the future agenda items, comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items?
I'm sorry, I'm working off of, um, two pieces of paper, but yes, if you want to make your comments and then if you want to suggest future agenda items, uh, you can do that as well. And then I'll send you um, an email as well about the process to, to get things on the agenda because you all should know. Um, and all of you ran, all of you will have opportunities to put things on the agenda. So this is, this is not a, a, a one-person show. And so I just want to say that from the, from the beginning. You were elected, uh, because people want you to represent them and that means that you need to have the opportunity to put things on the agenda, uh, and have discussions that are relevant to, uh, the wars that you represent. So, um, that said, I'm going to stop back up a little bit. And Mrs. Reckler, yes, your comments. And if you want to do the future agenda items right now, that's fine.
Great. Thank you. So it's great to be here. Feels somewhat natural. Um, and so I just, once again, I want to thank the community and I, I want to follow up with what I started with, which is, you know, when people tell you things and they believe in you, listen to them. But it's also our responsibility to tell people what we see in them. So I'm, I certainly do that and I do tap people for what I see, but I just want to make it a habit that we're doing it more. And so I just want to, want to share that. And so if you're thinking somebody is really good at something, tell them and, you know, if you think they're going to make a great whatever, make sure they know it. For some future agenda items, we did talk about income generation. So I do have an interest in that. I do have an interest in enrollment and marketing. I think those are opportunities for us. I don't think we've ever had a discussion like that to start to dig in about what we can do to boost enrollment. I also have a really nerdy need to, uh, have a presentation on data systems and the global thinking of, you know, where we might be, where we might be going. I actually sat on a lot of committees doing that stuff in the business world. So I do have a little bit of insight into that. Uh, I think also many others have passed resolutions for teachers prioritizing them for vaccines and perhaps we want to consider that. And I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to start by congratulating, uh, President Phillips on a great first meeting uh, and guiding us to do that. Um, and I also want to congratulate, uh, Smith Folds on becoming our clerk. Um, and just staff and the rest of my colleagues for a great first meeting. Hopefully this will, you know, continue as we move on next year. You know, second, I wanted to, um, thank you all for this nomination, uh, President Phillips and everybody else for voting for me for the, for the assembly. Um, I will send you updates as things come on that. Three, I would really appreciate, and this is kind of adding something to future agenda. I would really like to thank our nutrition services team, um, and for them to actually come to our meeting, maybe one of the first items, so that they're not here late because they work so early. But, you know, they do things that I'm, wouldn't even be willing to do, which is, you know, being in front of the schools every single day and exposing themselves to the virus to provide our students and families food, uh, which is incredible. And, and I just, I think it would be really nice for us to just say thank you to them. I know we can't really do anything else, but I, I think that'll be a nice thing to do. I would also, you know, I'm also interested in income generation presentation. I think that'd be great. An advocacy present, uh, presentation tied to that as well, if possible. I, I, I love, uh, trustee, uh, Reckler's idea of maybe doing a resolution to asking, uh, our county to prioritize teachers when the tier one B, uh, next set of vaccines come to the state of California. Uh, you know, I absolutely support that. Um, and I know that our student trustees wanted that student trustee policy to come back. Um, I would really love to have a discussion around that. Um, and lastly, uh, to not take more time, I just wanted to wish everybody in our community, especially our teachers, our staff who helps with the board meetings, um, and of course, everybody who's working so incredibly hard every single day to provide for our students to have a happy holiday, a safe holiday, try not to travel. But if you must, uh, you know, be as safe as possible and to my, all my colleagues and Superintendent Duffy and his cabinet, uh, happy holidays.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Christian?
Yes, I just want to say, uh, thank you. Um, I mean, to everybody, um, uh, you know, because everybody has put a lot of hard work in, um, at their school sites. And, and actually I want to just say is that all the way up until the, the 10th. And I've been, I, I worked all the way up until I got sworn in. And on the last day at Osceita High School, I was out there helping the cafeteria workers, picking up the boxes, food, everything. And we putting them into the cars. And so we actually been, we actually worked on this all the way from the time that we've been in this pandemic. And so, um, and I just want to say to all the cafeteria workers, they're doing a wonderful job. They're working hard. And we need to congratulate them and appreciate, uh, staff. And all of our staff, all of our classified, all of our teachers, all of our, uh, workers in this school district. Because everybody party hard out and do, and, and everybody put their best in. And so, um, and now we just got to push forward. And we got to keep our mindset focused on building and growing and developing our district. So, um, I, I'm just happy to be here and, um, and, and I just want to thank all, all those who supported me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mrs. Smith Folds.
I just want to say thank you. I think that we set some good precedent here tonight. The break was great. I think we need to keep that. That's excellent. At the very beginning, I forgot to thank my husband. Whoopsie doo. So I just want to make sure that I put that out there in the recording that I thank my husband for all of his, uh, love and support. We've been together for 23 years. So I'm sure I'm forgiven, but I did want to make sure that I thank him. I got to thank my mama too. Because if I thank my husband, I don't think my mom is going to be a lot of trouble. So I want to thank my mama and I thank my husband and thank you all. And I'm looking forward to serving with all of you and looking forward to serving the community and I appreciate it. We just got like 6,000 more to go. So we're doing a great job. Thanks.
Trustee Phillips, you are, you're muted, trustee Phillips.
I gotta stop doing that. Um, this is great. The student trustees are not normally here at the end of the meeting. So you all get to double dip on your comments tonight. Uh, so we're going to start with Mr. Cotton Blake. Because that's who we've been going with, uh, so far, at least in this meeting, we'll switch it up. Uh, but Mr. Cotton Blake, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to say, I'm not sure if I mentioned it earlier, but again, congratulations to all of our new trustees here. Congratulations to Mr. Phillips, uh, as president. Congratulations to Miss Folds as a clerk. I look forward to working with you all. I look forward to learning from you all, um, both as individuals and as board members, members of the community. Um, another thing that was mentioned tonight was around mental health and I'm glad that was being brought forward. As like I said before, that we're allocating funds towards the betterment of our students as we should be. Not only does this personally make me happy that we're addressing this, but this also builds trust with us in the community of students. That is very important and has been an issue for a while, but this is a great way to start repairing that same trust. And looking at, uh, when Mr. Wold was presenting earlier, looking at the financial aspect of what we're doing now. Hopefully me, obviously as a student, as a young man, learning to understand how to, um, develop in a positive manner, um, financially and understand how to move forward for the betterment of our district by way of fiscal management essentially. Um, that's something I look forward to learning as well. And I, I simply look forward to working with you all. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And trustee Garcia Avila.
Thank you so much. Um, first and foremost, congratulations to everyone who is on the board. I am so excited to work with each and every one of you. Congratulations, President Phillips. You, that little, that little break was amazing. I definitely needed that. I am so recharged and I'm probably not going to sleep. So that's great. Thank you. I ask that we continue with, uh, land acknowledgements. It's not just only important to me, but important to our Native American peoples and representation. And also I hope that the student, um, trustee bylaw is on the next agenda. Once again, thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. And, um, I will give my comment. And one of the things that I want us to do just as a team is when one of us, uh, does something positive, I want us to acknowledge, uh, each other and I want us to give credit, uh, where it's supposed to be. So the idea for the break was not mine. Uh, the idea for the break was, uh, Clerk Smith Folds. And so, you know, I don't want to pretend that I made that up because I didn't. Uh, that came from her. But what I do want to do, uh, this evening is I want to congratulate all of you. You did a tremendous amount of work tonight. This was not a show meeting. This was a working meeting. It is 10:48 and we're done. We didn't get to finish at 10:30, but you know, this is not one of those 12 o'clock, one o'clock meetings either, right? We're a little over, uh, but we got some amazing work done. You all stepped in there. You rolled up your sleeves. I, I knew that we would all be able to do this, uh, and, and that's what played out. I hope people understand now, if they didn't before, why I took all of those items off the agenda. Because even if you think about all of the work that we did tonight, there was still double that amount on the original agenda. Um, and it's 10:49. So, uh, we're going to work with each other. We're going to protect each other, uh, and we're going to set each other up for success. Because we have about 29,000 children, uh, about 3,500 employees, uh, who are depending on us to be successful. And, and I want to just make this one point, uh, to all of the employees who are still here and who called in earlier. I know Veronica Diaz called in from the Teamsters. Something, uh, that is amazing about this board, uh, that people are not necessarily talking about is that four out of five of the new board members were employees of this district. Four out of five. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, uh, Mr. Christian, uh, Mrs. Smith Folds. And I was an employee of this district as well at one time. And the fifth one might as well been an employee with all of the volunteer work that she has done, you know, over the years. So I want the employees who are listening to know that this board, uh, respects you and that this board values you. Because this board is you. This board is you. Four out of five of us were on the district's payroll at one time. We are you. Uh, and so we're going to move together collectively, uh, and do some good work, uh, for our children and families. So, uh, that wraps up my comment. We're on to item H, which is next meeting. Mr. Duffy already said that, but that's on check.
Phillips, we do, if we're going to do a special meeting, we need to set that date.
We need to set that date right now?
We really should, because if we're going to do something during the Christmas week, then I would rather do it now than emailing everybody to try to get an answer. Because I think really Monday and Tuesday are really your only possibilities. I think Wednesday and then Thursday is Christmas Eve. Um, so I think one of those two dates is probably the date. Potentially Tuesday, if we want to get everything together, give ourselves a minute. But I, that's, I'd love the board to just quickly, um, talk about when they want to do that.
And okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I do think we should keep the normal time that we do, because that's what the community is used to. But as far as the day is concerned, uh, Mrs. Reckler, are you available on Tuesday?
Yeah, not a problem.
Um, we'll just go in order. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith Folds?
I'm available. I just want to make sure it doesn't conflict with any district meetings or anything. That's been checked with the district calendar?
Correct.
Okay, I'm available.
Okay, student trustees?
Yes.
I'm free that day.
Okay, and I'm free that day as well. Uh, so can we just agree as a group that we'll do this at 6:30 on Tuesday? Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Phillips. I just want to confirm there's no closed session right before. Unfortunately, I am also working that day. So I just want to make sure I schedule everything right.
Do we need to have a closed session before this item?
Point of information, I do believe there are a couple of items that would require a closed session.
Okay.
It could be truncated, so we could look at a 5:30 potentially or a six with a 6:30 start.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, would 5:30 or six work for you?
Yeah, that works for me. Thank you.
E- either one or?
Yeah, either one.
Okay. Okay, so, um, everyone else, does that 5:30 time work for you all? Okay, I'm seeing thumbs up and heads nodding. Okay, so, uh, Tuesday, uh, which is the 22nd, the meeting to start at 6:30, closed session at 5:30.
Got it.
And with that, uh, I have the pleasure of adjourning your first school board meeting. You all did a great job. I'm proud of you. I swear I am. You all have a beautiful night, okay? Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, good night.